All right. Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our water workshop. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Box, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paul Gohardt.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barrera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Eric Cantu is absent. Gil Hernandez.
Yeah.
Kalen Paxton is running late. Everett Roy.
Here.
Mark Scott.
Here.
Carolyn Vaughn is absent. City manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
And city attorney Miles Brisley.
Here.
Mayor and council, a core of the council, and required our officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Ms. Box, Mr. Cantu just walked in, just for the record.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So today, we will be proceeding with an overview of the inner -- the first part of this workshop will be an overview of the Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus Alternate Project Delivery Options. After, we'll have question and answer and discussion after this presentation, and then we'll move on to an update on waters, our water supply projects. Go ahead.
Okay, Brett Van Hazel. And as you mentioned, Mayor, we will also have Sergio, who is our Director of Finance and Procurement, and then we'll have Nick Winkelman come up and present on the water supply update. So again, I'm going to be presenting on the alternate delivery options for the Inner Harbor project. Sergio will touch on the update for the Texas Water Development SWIFT loans, and then Nick Winkelman will give an update on the water supply project updates. So just a quick recap. While we're here today, at our last scheduled council meeting on September 23rd, there were a number of council members who expressed interest in holding a workshop to talk about alternate delivery options for the Inner Harbor project. So we put this together. We have a number of options to present. Also, we've had a number of questions regarding the Kiwet contract. So the Kiwet contract has not been terminated. If you remember, we had suspended the contract starting August 1st after the decision on July 29th, council meeting, to postpone a decision on Amendment 5 was made. So we issued a suspension of work, and we later extended it in September after our council meeting. So we've extended it for the full 90 days that the contract allows. So on October 30th, the suspension will end, and the contract will expire. I also want to point out that the project is fully permitted. We have all our permits from TCQ, the Corps. We also have the power, AEP, has already locked in an agreement with us. They're going to be providing the power to the site. We also have a land agreement that is still active and has extension options. And we also have deliverables that Kiwet has produced over the last eight months, all of which is available for all of the options that are going to be presented, either in part or whole. So as we work through the different options, I'll point out what's available and what we -- what will be shared for each option. So option number one that we have today is we could transition to the number two-ranked design-build team, which is Axiona. So Axiona is a large company. They're very experienced in water treatment, and specifically seawater desalination. So they were planning to team up with Mastech in a joint venture. Mastech is another large firm who has significant experience in infrastructure projects. And they had a large supporting team, and the companies that I highlighted here are local firms that do work with the city on a regular basis. But there's many more that are captured in the org chart. They have a -- they have a strong team, and they are -- they have -- we've met with them, and they have said that they are willing to continue this project if the city chooses to do so. So under this scenario, the city would continue to own and operate the plant. The design-build team would be headed up by Axiona, and the joint venture between them and Mastech. So the first actions that we would have to take if we chose to move forward with this option would be to terminate the contract with Kiwet. We would not terminate the contract, or we would not recommend terminating the contract with Fries and Nichols as the owner's agent. We would recommend continuing with them, given their vast experience on this project. We would work with Axiona to update the contract and negotiate, because we have a number of new information and updates to the project. We would want to update the contract accordingly. In addition, the Axiona team probably has some changes to their key personnel and other conditions they might want to discuss. So we'd work through that, and then we would come back to city council for approval to move forward with design and at a later date construction. The timeline is estimated at 45 months, and that would be from the date of approval to actually delivering water. And that timeline consists of approximately three months of us negotiating and finalizing the agreement with Axiona. And then we'd have about 12 months of planning and design, and then 30 months of construction. That's consistent with the timeline that we had with Kiwet. The SWIFT loans would be available under this option, and we would be able to request additional state funding. And if we were unable to get the additional state funding, we could utilize utility revenue bonds. So option number two, we could move forward with Gulf Coast Authority, or we could work with Gulf Coast Authority. You've recently seen them here with our Dura talking about reuse. So they were in person, so I'm sure you're familiar with some of this information. But they are a political subdivision of the state. They come in and help government perform local needs and functions, and delivering a water treatment facility like this fits into their mission. So their primary -- their primary mission has been focused on wastewater treatment. They are able to do water treatment, and they're willing to work with us on this project. So under this scenario, GCA would be the owner-operator of the plant. It would continue as a progressive design-build. So what we would -- what we would propose is to either transfer, sell, or lease the permits, the land, and the power. And then on the contract documents and the contracts themselves could be administratively transferred to GCA. But all of the other items would need to receive approval to do one of those things, transfer, sell, or lease. In this agreement, we would have to obviously negotiate with GCA on the details, and we'd also have to negotiate a take-or-pay contract with them. That would -- we're -- I'm projecting about 42 months for this. Now, about six months of this is tied to negotiating the agreement with GCA. It could take longer. That's just an estimate right now, six months. I think GCA said six months is doable. It could take a little bit longer. And then we'd have approximately six months of planning and design, and then 30 months of construction. The reason for the shorter planning and design is because in this scenario, Kiwet's contract would be transferred, so we wouldn't lose the progress they've made to date. So they would be able to pick up from where they left off and continue on. So it's a little bit less planning and design effort. Another item to mention here is because GCA is not-for-profit, they -- all the costs are truly passed through. The only additional fee that would be added on is a management fee. So it would really be the overhead for GCA, which would be similar to what, if we managed it, would be similar. We would have an overhead cost to that. So that is one benefit of working with GCA. Because they're also a government entity, they can also utilize our SWIFT loans, and we can request additional state funding to support this. Now, given that this is a transition away from the city performing the project, and it's a little bit different delivery method than originally proposed, we would need to go back to TWDB to make sure that they're okay with this option. But I think it's a good discussion, and I think it's something that is doable. In addition, we could work with GCA to come up with additional financing options for consideration. So option number three is we could forego the progressive design-build process and proceed with a design-bid-build-delivery process, which is what we traditionally do for our projects here in the city. So in this scenario, we would own and operate the plant. The designer and contractor is to be determined. We'd go out for solicitation to get them. So step one under this option is to terminate the contract with both Kiwet and Fries and Nichols. We would develop an RFQ for design. We would select a designer, and then we would come back to city council for approval of the design. When the design was complete, we would put out a request for proposals. We would get the bids back in. We would -- we traditionally select the low bidder, and then we would come back to city council for approval on the construction contract. The timeline for this is estimated at 62 months. The -- we've got about four months for the RFQ for the design. I've got 18 months design. The main reason for the extension on the design side is because we would have to do the pilot as part of the design, whereas right now, we're doing design and pilot and construction somewhat overlapping in the progressive design-build process. We don't have that flexibility under design-bid-build. So we have about 18 months design. When that's all complete, we would do a four-month, approximately four months for the RFP for construction, and then we'd have approximately 36 months of construction. And the construction's a little bit longer than the other options, mainly because we don't have the ability to do early work packages under this scenario. So I'm estimating some additional time for some of those long-lead items. We would be able to utilize SWIFT loans, and we could request additional funding from the state on this option. And again, because this is a different delivery option than what was originally proposed, we would need to get with TWDB to make sure that they're okay with this. And if we were unable to secure additional funding, we could utilize utility revenue bonds. So option number four, again, we would forego the design, progressive design-build-delivery option, and we could proceed with a public-private partnership, a P3. So under this scenario, the P3 entity would be the owner and operator. The designer and contractor would be determined at a later date by the P3 entity. Under this scenario, we would, again, terminate the contracts with Kiwet and Fries and Nichols. We would need to adopt the Texas Governmental Code, Chapter 2267, which talks to P3, because we currently do not have that adopted. And then we would need to work on a agreement with the P3 entity. We would need to go out and bid it out, select a partner, and then we'd have to come back to city council for approval. The estimated timeline is 60 months. The 60 months is built up of about 12 months of the city developing the actual agreement and the RFP. We'll have about nine months for the bidders, you know, for advertising, for them to actually do a design and come up with a proposed cost. Once they're on board, we'll have about nine months of planning and design, and then we'll have, I'm estimating, 30 months of construction, which is consistent with the other -- the other projects. Under this scenario, we would anticipate private financing from the P3. So there wouldn't be any funding provided by the city. So this just captures everything that was discussed across the four options. So the two options where the city would continue to own and operate are the options one and three, and then options two and four. They would be owned and operated by others. So that's all -- that's everything I have on the delivery options. Mayor, are we okay with having Sergio do his slides first before? Okay.
The next slide here is a nice snapshot of information on the Texas Water Development Board loans the city has. So starting with a table, it's labeled SWIFT loans. The city was approved a total of $760,325,000 of loans. To date, we've borrowed $235,225,000. Funds available to the city to continue to borrow is $525,100,000. Next table over is our borrowed funds in the state escrow account. The cash balance in that account as of September is $212,578,411. This cash balance in the escrow account is subject to state approval for withdrawals. Now, that is not cash on hand we have in our bank or easily available to us. Any draws from these escrow require state approval. Lastly, we have our outstanding SWIFT debt. So that's the -- we have a total of $231,145,000 of outstanding principal. With that principal, we have interest of $135,838,688 for a combined total of about $366 million. So the next steps to be considered is we would need direction from council on how to proceed with the loan proceeds and the SWIFT loans. Once we have direction, we would consult with our bond counsel, our financial advisors, and meet with Texas Water Development Board on how the -- what the roadmap would look like moving forward. If deficence is considered, we would have to run an analysis to find out what that cost would be. And then lastly, return to council with options and recommendations. That's it for my slides.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take discussion questions before we move on to the -- our project update. I guess, and maybe we can start, Peter, with you giving us an update since we're talking about the SWIFT loan status on some of the meetings you've had here recently. about the SWIFT loan status on, on some of the meetings you've had here recently.
Right, yeah, so two days ago, we met with the Texas Water Development Board, with Brian McMath and a lot of his team members that have been working for the city. So it's, the short of it is until, until we, until we have a firm, a firmity from the city council, it's hard to know how to proceed with the loan that we've taken out. And as Sergio said, it's a little bit more complex, since we don't have the money in our bank of that 200-some-odd million we already borrowed. It's in the state's escrow account of sorts. So the topic of defeesence, because the bonds can't be, can't be sold, so to speak, or paid off until a 10-year period, generally what you do in this case is, is enter into a defeasement, as they call it, a situation where we put money into a interest-bearing account for that 10-year period with the hope that that interest helps to generate enough interest income to pay for the, the debt interest that's, that's on the loan. But Texas Water Development Board admitted, and I was looking out there earlier to see if our financial advisors here from our bond council, I should say, they were with us, but it's a little complex in that this has never been experienced before from the state. So it's going to be a first time, so we, it's going to have to be incremental. First, we need to tell the state, are we, do we want any more of this SWIFT loan? Yes or no? If the answer is no, then we'll move to the next step, which is then how do we defeas it over a 10-year period? And since there's no precedent at the state level with the SWIFT loan program, it has to be developed. And so we'll have to work closely with the Texas Water Development Board team. And really, they're deferring to our bond counsel, Norton, Norton Rose Fulbright, Stephanie Libby, who's a, a strong professional, she'll give us good advice and direction, so. But until we make a, the next step, the city council, I should say, then, then there's not much work being done. So there's options for the city council and for the city, and we'll have more firmity as we provide more firmity. I should say, just to make it clear, Brett said it, but the last action by the city council was to not fund, not to continue funding Kiwet. The, when we started down that path, we put a 90-day hold on their contract, and that 90th day is October 30th, when the contract would expire. We have not, we have not with certainty told Kiwet we're terminating, terminating your contract, and we hope that input from the council today will give us direction, one way or another, to either keep it open through the, to October 30th, or terminate it officially in writing. They'll need that. We have, the city council, not this one, but the prior city council, entered into a legal, legal contract with Kiwet, and so there's legal provisions in that contract that guide it. And one of those is, is terminating it, either by it expiring by October 30th, or us telling them in writing that we're going to terminate your contract. So that's another important step that we hope to get today from the city council. One, do we want to keep the contract open till at least the 30th? Or two, do we want to terminate it? And so while there's no vote, we'll be listening to the council, and we'll make that next step based on the input we hear today.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Yeah, Councilwoman Campos.
If I could just make one comment. Could you tell us, in plain words, what does defeasement mean?
Yeah, it means that because we can't pay-
One word.
One word? You can't do it in one word?
Cancel. It means cancel.
Defeesment means that we have a 10-year-
Cancel.
No, defeasement doesn't equal cancel. It's, it's that we have a legal obligation to pay back debt, and you can't pay it all off in one day, because the investors made a commitment to pledge their money and get a return. At a minimum, we have to pay interest for 10 years. That's something that's already-
So, so you're can't, we're canceling?
If the council wants to terminate the loan.
We're looking into canceling the debt, defeasement.
Yeah, well, we can't really cancel the loan we took out, because we have a commitment to keep it-
Right.
For 10 years.
But the actual loan, we will figure out how we're going to pay it, but it would be actually making the steps to canceling the loan.
Yeah, I think maybe what we could say is, this councilwoman, the total, there was a slide up there that showed the total loan approval of 757 or so. So we would cancel any more issuances of debt, but that first couple of issuances, that equal about $235 million, we have to pay that back.
I understand we have to pay that back.
Yeah.
But it would actually mean that we would be canceling any more, any-
Right, yeah. The term defe-, yeah, that's, yeah.
Councilwoman, the defeasance, what it does, it'll take the debt off our books, but it will sit in an escrow account, and we move that pot of money to earn interest so that it can fund itself.
Yes.
What we don't know is, is there enough principal and interest to fund those payments for the next 10 years? So there may be additional costs to the city to make sure there's enough pot of money in that account that's funding the future debt payments. And then there has to be enough money in that account. So these are bonds that are going to be callable in 10 years. So at the 10-year, those bonds are what's called called, and so we pull those bonds back, and then we have to pay out all the investors at year 10.
Okay, but we had a plan to pay it, even if we, right? We had a plan.
We had a plan to serve debt.
Yeah, to, to serve the debt, so it's not anything that we didn't know that we had to do.
The difference would be servicing the debt with revenue from the utility system that's being earned from the rates versus having this pot of money with no revenue generating, revenue generating based slowly on interest earned. And so there, there is a difference there, because you can always adjust rates to make sure those debt services met versus you really have to have experts calculate how much money needs to be in that account to generate enough funds to pay the principal and interest, plus to do the payout at year 10.
But we wouldn't be generating any money for at least three, four, or five years, or not longer. I mean, because, I mean, we just were presented with the length of the project, so how was it going to get paid to begin with?
So the debt that we've incurred, we're already servicing that debt, so that's already factored in through the rates, and so the revenue being earned now is servicing the debt.
Okay, we'll leave it at that, and let's see what the others have to say.
Councilman Scott.
So what's, yeah, this is interesting to me. So normally, we go out and we'll sell $100 million in bonds, and we get the $100 million, and we put it in our escrow account. Is that how that normally works?
Yeah, we put it in our bank account.
All right, and then it's, we're spending, I don't know, $10 million a month for 10 months, but the other 90 is sitting in an account generating some interest? Is that how it normally works?
Right, generates interest, that's right.
Interest. Yeah, that I got. But in this instance, the state's like, no, 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 we hold the account, and we dole out, poor choice of words, the money as you need it.
That's, they, they, they don't, they, we submit, we submit for reimbursement, and they reimburse us with actual proof of expenditures.
That's a better way to say it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but my point was, we, it's, we don't have the normal ability to, to generate interest in, in that debt while we're waiting to use it. In this instance, it's, that's, I did not know-
It's in a state account, so to speak, because in the SWIFT is, yeah. So it makes it a little more complex.
Sure.
And what Sergio said to Councilwoman Campos's comment is that, that we have to make sure there's enough money in that account if you do this defeasements. And the state, one thing they did tell us is, we're not putting money in. If you need to put more money into the escrow account to defeas it, we have to do that. And so that, that sets up, that's one of those steps that has to take place with our bond counsel. How much additional money does the city have to put into this escrow account to make the defeasance work?
And in this instance, because we're not generating new water, the debt would be repaid by inside-city limit customers?
That's what the opinion is of our legal counsel, yes.
And if you, but if you create water, you, you distribute that cost over the whole rate system.
Over all of our customer accounts, over the seven counties, correct?
That's a, that's an important note, right?
That is.
Because I don't think, I don't think a lot, I mean, I, I, if I weren't in this room, I wouldn't have paid much attention, I wouldn't have understood that. But if you're watching, so the difference is, if, if we have to pay it back, inside-city limit customers would have to pay it back. If we do something and create water, then the system allows us to, to spread that cost through the whole seven county or all of our customers.
Right, all the customer accounts.
Let me first apologize, I'm in the, I'm blaming you, by the way, Caitlin. I've had a sinus infection for two weeks, and so, and she was, she had sinuses three weeks ago, so, I'm just kidding, of course, but I apologize for just the, the state of my physical being. Here, here are my thoughts. I think, first of all, I think it's important for the state to know that, that we appreciate them, you know? I, I think that we didn't get here alone, right? It's a partnership. And if we have a different position today than we did yesterday, that doesn't diminish our appreciation to TCEQ, Texas Water Development Board, the governor's office. And so I just wanted, at least as a council member, and I think on behalf of the city, we want to recognize the work that our partners in Austin have done, and, and to some extent, the federal government is trying to figure out ways to help us. And that's significant, you know, because we're, we're having these conversations, and sometimes it, it, it can be conveyed that we don't appreciate their working with us. And so at least on behalf of the Scott family, we appreciate the state. I, I do think the public wants us to be in this room. I'm comfortable that, as I, I said to somebody, they want us back in the ring, trying to figure out how to fix this. I think the fact that we have two, we have a project that's fully permitted, and I think, I think the state wants us, I mean, the city wants us back in. I think this is an "and" conversation. I said that on, when I was sworn in in January. I think water is an "and," not an "or." And so I maintain an interest in implementing the fully permitted project that we have before us. I voted for Kiwet. That was yesterday. The council is, I don't think is interested in pursuing that avenue, and I, I respect that. I, I do believe that the Axiona and the Gulf Coast Authority merit additional interest and review. I don't, Peter, I don't know if you, if you terminate Kiwet now or not. I don't know that it would matter to me, you know, personally, whether that happens today, tomorrow, or, or you extend it if you could. I like Axiona, because they have local contractors, think that's a good thing. I think local contractors have the local community in its best interest. I think what I heard is that we can, we don't, we don't throw away, we don't, we don't, we will not have wasted the $50 million spent already if we picked an Axiona, or would they, we would, I guess, they would start over.
I think there is work product that's been done by Kiwet that could be utilized. So I don't think it's a full loss, but I do think that Axiona, in their due diligence, is want to, going to want to go through everything and make sure that everything's appropriate. So there is some rework, absolutely.
All right, okay. And is, is there an ICE component to an Axiona?
We would have an independent cost estimator in that scenario, just like we do on the current one.
Okay. I have always thought that the Backstop was this acronym, ICE, independent-
Cost estimator.
Cost estimator, which is new words from Mark. But to me, that, I've always said that those are those strange people that are sitting in the back of the room, just kind of waiting with their, you know, notepads and their calculators, and that eventually, they're going to come in, and, and that's when stuff gets real, right? They're going to say, no, it really is $10. And so it's important to me that there's an ICE component. I understand there was, but is with the Kiwet project, and you're telling me there is, there would be with an Axiona project. That's important. I'm, I'm interested in the Gulf Coast Authority. I've never heard of Gulf Coast Authority before Dan brought them a couple of weeks ago. They, they seem interested to me, and I'd like to pursue that opportunity also.
Mayor, if you don't mind, can I just follow up on a couple things? So one, Brett went over four options for the city council this morning, but there's a fifth one, which is do nothing, do none of the five. And based on the council input today, we, we do, we have two business decisions to make. I do as the CEO of the city, so while there's no vote today, we're going to move, I'm going to move forward with, with, with actions in two areas. One, the legal Kiwet contract, because we can't just string it along and it will terminate on the 30th. So either we, with certainty, terminate it, so they can know to move on, and we can know we don't have a, a legal risk keeping a contract open that has requirements to fulfill. And then two, and probably more importantly, the Texas Water Development Board loan. They, they have mon, they have money in that account that we talked about, they talked to us about, we could take the cash and reloan it to some other entity. And the $535 million that remains, that could be, if we don't, if we don't reuse it, they don't let us reuse it, then they can use that for some other city or, or entity trying to develop a water project. So we'll make a decision there as well with the Texas Water Development Board loan, either to, to keep it going in, in its application form, or to begin that defeasements process. So there's two business decisions that have to be made, and, and based on the input today, we'll, we'll help make those for the city.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Councilman Kent, too.
Thank you, Mayor. What's a cost per thousand gallons for each option? Do you have that yet?
No, it's too, too early to say.
Okay. Just wanted to verify, I got like three text messages asking that question.
And just to elaborate, just let's elaborate on it, Councilman. So the, the two that we go back out and do a whole brand-new process is, obviously, we don't know who the vendor is, who the firms are, so that's very unknown. The Axiona one, they have told us that, and they're here, a representative from Axiona, Efren Rodriguez is here. He said that they think they could probably get the plant bill at a lesser value than the $1.2 billion, so you would think that would make, would make the prices go down. A lot of the price for the water is based on the technology that's used, the processing, you know, the reverse osmosis, and, and so that, so that's unknown as well. We just, we don't have the, the business development for any one of those other three options developed, so it's not that we don't want to do it, it's just the data's not there.
I understand. Um, are you, next time you come in with slideshows and stuff like this, can you put the dates instead of the months, just for the public to understand it more, like the year, month, you know? I would appreciate that. And then also, what is the GCA's expertise in D-SAL?
So I, I don't, I, I don't believe GCA has necessarily expertise in D-SAL. They're similar to, say, the city.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have expertise in D-SAL, but what they do is they bring in people who do. So they would have, in this scenario, they would have Kiwet, they would have, say, Friesen-Nichols, and they could bring on either additional, a support to manage the project, or if they have personnel within GCA that can manage it. But again, just like us, they hire experts to perform the work.
Okay, and then from wastewater, and now being a water provider, that's within a couple of weeks, did it, did it tell you anything about that?
So-
How they wanted to take care of wastewater, now they want to be a water provider?
So I think what, what they want to do is help governments, entities, any way they can, and they've been, they have the ability to do water treatment management. And they're looking to do that.
Okay.
And they believe they have the, they believe they have what they need to provide that. They've already done so in, in the wastewater treatment arena, and they believe they can carry that over into the water treatment arena.
Got it. My last question is, on the Farfield study that Kiwet did, when can that be public to be reviewed independently?
Are we, are we talking about just the data that was provided?
Correct. Wasn't there a Farfield study done?
So they, they, they took the data that was collected, and they put it into their model, and they generated the results. So again, as I mentioned before, the model itself that they created, that's proprietary, we wouldn't share, but we could, we could get the data, and we could share that.
So if we can't get the other data, right?
If we did, so-
Talking about?
The initial data is something that's more readily available. It's information they collect from NOAA and, and other sources. The output is something that nobody has seen, and that's something that we would work with Kiwet to provide. Now, if we canceled, if we did terminate their contract, that could be deliverable from Kiwet.
Okay. That is it for now. Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilman Barera.
All right, it's okay, thank you, Mayor. What's the, is there any additional costs associated with terminating the Kiwet contract?
Additional costs? No, I mean, we would, we, we have closed every agreement we could, we've returned all the, you know, temporary equipment. So the only thing that's really open right now are rental agreements that were already going to go well beyond the termination date. So those are still open, but if we terminated today, there shouldn't be additional costs from Kiwet.
But, and so what's the cost of the rental equipment? And how much have we, we expended about $50 million so far, or, or the total?
So through, through the end of July, we're at $43 million, but we still have to finalize all the other agreements through August. So I anticipated up to $50 million was the estimated total expenditure for the project.
Okay, okay, so you're estimating $50 million, and in addition to, that's inclusive of the rental agreements?
Correct. That'll include, once we close everything out, it'll be in the $50 million. That'll include, once we close everything out, it'll be in the 50 million range.
Okay. Now, I guess, at what point, so, at what point would we run a defeasance analysis? I mean...
After today's decisions, that work can begin. Stephanie Libby's here, Libby is here with us from Bond Counsel Norton Rose Fulbright. She was with us, she was with us the other day when we met with the Texas Water Development Board. But there's a lot of critical analysis, and our financial advisor, Victor Keoga, from Specialized Finance, would also assist in that. But as he said, and Stephanie can probably best answer it, there's a lot of, a lot of critical analysis that has to take place, financial analysis. Stephanie?
Morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Stephanie Libby. I'm with Norton Rose Fulbright. We're service bond counsel to the city. So as Peter said, I was with them Wednesday when we met with Water Development Board. And the complicating factor associated with this is that we're dealing with two series of bonds. And so the City of Corpus Christi issued their bonds to fund the loan from the Water Development Board. But at the same time, Water Development Board issued a larger series of bonds to fund multiple loans to local governments throughout the state. So the question that we have pending with the Texas Water Development Board is, in addition to the city having to defees its bonds, does Water Development Board also have to defease a portion of their bonds? And if the answer to that question is yes, what does that defeasement look like? Because we only have one pot of money. And so there's only available proceeds in an amount sufficient to fund one escrow fund. And so is that a City of Corpus Christi escrow fund, or is it a Texas Water Development Board escrow fund? So that's the question that we're currently working through with Water Development Board. They're working with their bond counsel, with their tax attorneys. When we get an answer to that question, Victor and his team at Specialized Public Finance will be able to give more concrete answers. In conjunction with the SWIFT loan, the state is subsidizing the interest rate to the City of Corpus Christi's loan. So it's gonna be more expensive to defease the Texas Water Development Board bonds than it would be to defease the City of Corpus Christi's bonds. So I'm happy to answer any questions. It's a complicated subject matter. This is the first time that Water Development Board is facing this question, so there is a lot of first impressions and legal research that's going on to answer these, and the best interest of both the city and the state.
Okay, so then, I mean, I guess we probably don't have an answer to, how much was it that the interest, again, the interest that the state was buying down? And so if that's the case, then would that, we'd have to, we'd also, since we're defeating not the state, then we'd have to, would we have to pay that additional interest?
I think that that's an open question that we'll have to discuss with Water Development Board.
And then when we met with Fitch and Moody, defeasement would do what to our bond rating?
You know, it was less the issue for, also on Wednesday, we met with Fitch Rating. That was a second rating agency. We met with Moody's a few weeks ago. Their issue is really two, Fitch's issues was really summarized into two issues. One is, excuse me, one is long-term water security. And then the second one is having large customers for which we don't have a take-or-pay contract in place, and we recognize that's a legacy issue that we need to address. Our new rate modeler identified that, that being, some of our large customers use lots of water, and, but we don't have a contract with them to keep them as a customer. And so if we put money in, if we invest into water projects, water production projects, and the big customer leaves, then everybody else pays for that investment. So those were Fitch's two biggest issues. Similar with Moody's, it was more about water security and the ability to continue advancing the city, at least with water.
Now, we do have a take-or-pay contract with Exxon, correct?
We do have one with Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, Gulf Coast Growth Ventures. And I know there's been another, there's another industrial user that is requested that they have one as well.
Right. That's something we're gonna work on these next three months.
So how about, and this is probably a question for Victor, but I know of two other municipalities that are issuing debt because they, they're, they obviously, their council has lost confidence that Corpus Christi's gonna solve the problem. So how does, since, does this also affect their bond rating because we're affecting their long-term water security?
It could potentially. It could potentially. I mean, the availability of water and the impact that water has on an economy is definitely a factor that rating agencies will look at for both cities, general obligation, credit rating, and utility system ratings.
Yeah, I know of one that their budget's only 12 million, and they're issuing 35 million in bonds to establish some wells. Okay, so what if, and is there a probability of, well, let's say Gulf Coast Authority, would, I guess my question is that, could they apply for their own permits? I mean, the, our science, the science is public information.
Yeah, so Gulf Coast Authority was a state-enabled body. They're a subdivision of the state. The governor appoints their board. They were created in 1969 for wastewater management from industry, primarily then in Galveston and the Houston area. In 19, in 2015, I mean, the legislature expanded their authority to be in the water business as well. So they're a legal entity, legal state subdivision, entity of the state that can apply for permits. So the answer's yes. Just wanted to give you that background.
Just like the Neusis River Authority could.
Correct. Yeah, well, they are, yeah, that's correct.
They also have a gubernatorial-appointed board that could say, you know what, the technology's already been done, it's public information, we could apply for those permits, and we could sell the water to Corpus Christi.
That's correct.
So that option's not on here. I mean, I don't know that, I know John's there, and I don't mean to ask him or put him in a spot, I'm not gonna do that, but there could be another authority that basically says, okay, Corpus Christi, you could have a take-or-pay contract with GCA, they could obtain their own financing through SWIFT loans, and that inclusive of, I mean, I'm assuming it's probable, it's possible that the Neusis River Authority could adopt this project. And then we remove ourselves completely from it, and they could either sell the water directly to industry, or they could sell it to us as a customer.
Right. Yeah, we have not asked that question to the Neusis River Authority, but that's an option.
Okay, but when we had our conversation with Gulf Coast Authority, did we enter into that option?
That's the option that's on the table, which is that we, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, yes, option that I saw here was that we're gonna, we're gonna, we would assign the contracts to them, and then we would sell, but they could have the opportunity to do this on their own. They could make an arrangement with, could they make an arrangement with Flint Hills to buy the land, purchase the land from us, purchase the easements from us?
So we could do any combination of the, we have a number of items, right? So we have their contract documents, the contracts, the land, the power, the permits. So we could choose to not assign the contracts and the documents, and maybe we want to sell them the land, the power, the permits, and then let them go do their own thing. That is an option. So really, under this scenario, we're just saying that we have all this available, so you could choose how we kind of move forward, and it could be any combination.
Yeah, but Councilman, you're saying you could throw everything out, and they, independent of the city council, could go talk to Flint Hills or any other landowner, buy land, apply for permits, say, I'm gonna get in the water business, and the city, do you wanna buy water from us? Or industry, do you wanna buy water from us? That's possible. It would be out of the council or city's control in terms of...
If that's the case, then how would that impact, or I guess we haven't done any...
Well, what we do know is if, right now, in a good word, the city is a monopoly when it comes to water, and so that helps our ratepayers in that we have everybody at the table helping to pay into the system. If we lose a, if we lose a customer classification, if we lose a city, if we lose a certain customer account, like a large-volume user, that means the system still has the same cost, more or less, fixed costs especially, but now we have less revenue to pay the bills. And so you have to divide the cost by fewer ratepayers, which means the price goes up. So that's what we're mindful of, that's why we're working closely with John Byram from the Neusis River Authority, and he respects that, and his board chair respects that business notion or construct, because we care, we care about the ratepayers, we care about residents, businesses, and large-volume users in this region, and we want the price of water to be favorable for every account. But when you start having additional water providers, what can happen is price can go up for the ratepayers, all classifications, residential, commercial, and large volume, and wholesale providers as well.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, our overhead, it runs for, I mean, it's what, capacity to 40 million gallons a day?
Yeah, but in the summertime, 130 million gallons.
Yeah, but the overhead for the system.
Probably so, yeah.
So, less customers, even if we're, we get to the point of curtailment, and we only have available 70 to 80 gallons, a million gallons a day, well, the overhead is still the same for, to run the facility.
Yeah, correct.
Reasonably.
Yeah, that's correct.
So the rates will still go up, even though we have less water.
Right.
And then if we lose customers. But I would think also that even though this process is expensive, the blended rates make it more attractive for that organization to sell to us.
We agree on that. That's what we have talked to John Byram about, which is that we know D-SAL, seawater desalination, is the most expensive water source right now, at least in our portfolio of water, if we had that water. However, when you blend it with surface water and groundwater, it becomes a more favorable rate, and one that you can afford more easily, right? So if you just sold D-SAL water to ratepayers, that's gonna be expensive water. But if you take the cost to make that water and blend it with very inexpensive water sources, some of which we have, then the rate is favorable, or it's, you know, it's one that a business can afford and a residential customer can afford.
And then one other question for bond counsel. So private equity, there's a cost associated with it. So what, any idea of what that interest would be in comparison to, I mean, this is a Victor question, really, where that interest would be in comparison to the Texas Water Development Board rate?
Well, I think it's, that is gonna be dependent upon somewhat the Texas Water Development Board, right? Especially if you have, if we're talking about GCA and GCA's ability to go to Water Development Board to get either a SWIFT loan or some other loan through a Water Development Board program, that certainly could be an option, but that is an open issue that would be subject to both staff recommendation at Water Board and Water Board approval. If you're talking about true private equity, as in they go out and get a commercial loan for a facility of this size, then I think you're looking at a substantial increase in the interest rate as compared to the interest rate that the city currently has through the SWIFT loan.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hurtindis.
Okay, I'm glad you're up there, because this kind of, I wanna understand how this loan, bond process works, considering the Texas Water Development Board and then them buying our bonds.
Right.
So when the state sold the bonds, was it specific to our project?
Your project was one of many that was selected for inclusion in their bond program.
So their bond, when they sold their bonds, it was many projects? Was it assigned based on what was approved by them, or was it done just by the region and plan?
No, it was based on projects selected by the board. And so the series of bonds that Water Development Board sold to fund loans in that year was somewhere between 1 to 1.2 billion dollars.
Okay, but it was not completely specific to our...
It was not completely specific to Corpus Christi. But walking through the loan program and the application process, at milestones within that process, Water Development Board will reach out to the city's financial advisor. So they reached out to Victor and Victor's team to get the interest rates and to get the repayment schedule for the City of Corpus Christi's debt.
Okay, so with that, the SWIFT loans are the Texas Water Development Board buying our bonds specifically. So they are the complete owner of our bonds?
Yes.
Okay, so the defeasance would be paid to them, to the Texas Water Development Board. There's no, it wasn't like it was sold on the open market to, you know, for sale, for...
Correct.
For institutionalized purchasers, right? So it's really the Texas Water Development Board that is taking those payments?
Correct.
Okay. With that in mind, there was some aspect within the letter they sent us that talked about public utility authorities that could be utilized for that. Did we take a look into any of those in there? Because it's not in your presentation about public utility authorities, PUAs.
We have, we, we've talked about it internally, Councilman, we didn't, we don't have it on a list here, but the last letter that the Development Board sent was pretty specific on the monies could only be used for that, the Inner Harbor D-SAL project at that location. So we could go, and if we wanted to do some other project, we would just go back out and reapply. So that's what, that's, I think, would be the answer, that if a public utility was created, that the legislature enabled the creation of in this last session, then it could be created, it could develop a project, and it could also apply for new Texas Water Development Board loan funding.
Yeah, and I think something that maybe doesn't get discussed is the competitive nature of the SWIFT program. Texas Water Development Board has multiple programs that they offer loans to local governments through. The SWIFT program offers the highest interest rate subsidy. So it is like the premier program that you would want a loan from if you are a local government. They have Clean Water Revolving Fund, Drinking Water Revolving Fund, those may or may not offer interest rate subsidies or some type of principal deferment. DEFUN, that is operated through the Development Fund, that's operated through the Water Development Board, offers no interest rate subsidies, and basically, you're just getting the interest rate that Water Development Board gets. When it comes to assigning a SWIFT loan commitment to another local government or to another entity that would issue bonds, even if it's for the same project, Water Development Board at a staff level will not say whether or not they would recommend that. Because for the SWIFT program, they rank these projects. They rank the projects based upon the region, they base, they rank the projects based upon the benefit that's provided to the community. They cannot say that they would offer a SWIFT loan for the same project without knowing who the customers of that project would be, because they wouldn't wanna commit the state to that same interest loan subsidy without that additional information. So the same project, the same physical project, may not rank the same way through their application process based upon the financing structure and who the issuer of those bonds would be.
You know, the benefit of having a PUA, or even working through another government entity like either the Neusis River Authority or the, or GCA, is that the debt would be on their books and not ours, correct?
Well, the debt would be on their books from an accounting perspective. The obligation to repay would still be on the city's books.
Right, we would still have to pay, it's just a matter of where that debt sits.
Yeah, the debt, so let's say, GCA, for instance, they have that conduit debt, but there is a financing agreement which would then put long-term liabilities on our books. So there's no way around the debt, there is no off-balance-sheet debt accounting. Gatsby requires us to book, whether it be a bond debt, which is long-term, or long-term financing, or a financing agreement. That debt will go on our books, there's no way around that.
Right, and, you know, I went and looked at GCA in terms of how much debt they actually carry right now, and they carry 102 million dollars in debt. Nowhere near the kind of project size this would be. You know, not to say that they're not a good organization, they're just not, I just don't think they have the experience or capacity to manage a program this size, or a project this size. I could be wrong, I don't know them personally.
I don't know GCA personally, but I have looked at the amount of their outstanding debt, and I believe that's an accurate figure.
Right. You know, there, you know, we haven't explored the option of transferring some of this to another approved process through the Water Development Board. We haven't asked them whether that they would be willing to do something like that, correct?
The PUA, Councilman?
No. No, no, no. We have other region-end-approved projects, right?
Right.
And so we haven't actually formally said, okay, we're not doing this, we're doing these other projects, can we transfer the...
No, yeah, we asked them that. So the last letter that was sent, and we talked to Brian McMath about that on Wednesday, they have, they, in that last letter that was sent to the City Council, it was very clear in the letter that this, that the loan...
But the board has not approved anything, right?
I'm just going to finish, and then I'll answer that second question. So they said the loan that we have today can only be applied to the project at hand, which is the Inner Harbor Desalination Project off Nuasis Bay Boulevard. That's it. If we don't want to do that project, then we can reapply for some of the site, some of the project.
Okay.
That's clear.
So we have not applied to the Texas Water Development Board to have an actual approval or disapproval?
Of using the same loan for a different project?
These are just conversations with the Texas Water Development Board staff. It has not gone to the board for their approval or disapproval.
We've been told by staff that it would not be staff recommendation for the board to approve. So has an application been made to the board to reassign the commitment? No, that formal application has not been made.
Okay, I understand.
But we've been told by staff that...
The reason I say that is because we get recommendations from staff all the time, and sometimes we go with it, and sometimes we don't. So we have not actually had the opportunity to ask that formally, in a formal way, to the Texas Water Development to get absolute certainty.
Right, that's correct. If you want us to do that, we can, Councilman. What they do have is what we did send them in writing is a request to delay the installation of the next loan tranche till next year. And what they told us Wednesday is that will go to the board in either November or December, that answer from the board. So if the council wants us to ask them officially in writing so they can place it on their board, we can, we can do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. You know, I think that we're going around a whole lot of different things regarding this very important topic, you know, which is what happens here, which, this is a very, very big deal in terms of what direction we go into and how it affects us, how it affects, you know, I hadn't thought about that. Somebody asked the question about how it affects those that we, that we deliver water to and can it, and the answer is most likely, I think you said. You know, but at the end of the day, we're looking at options, and I think it's very important, and there must be a sense of urgency, because we're dealing with this second part of it, which is how does this affect us financially, how does it affect our bond rating, how does it affect our neighbors? But what we're trying to do here is secure a long-term water supply. And I think we need to stay extremely focused on that, and today is the opportunity. We must do something. We did something. The majority of this council did something. And that's respected, because that's the way the process works. But today, we have options before us to move forward something that has been moving forward, that is going to be a solution to a long-term water source. And the clock is ticking. And so they've given, I'm going to ask whoever's laughing and making noises to please stop. If you don't agree, that's okay, but please don't be disruptive. The options before us, we must give staff direction in one way or the other, so that we can actually move forward in how we are going to address this, because there has to be a solution. If we don't move forward with something that's on, you know, that's been presented to us today, which, to me, you know, a P3 doesn't really make sense to me, because you would go to a P3 if you don't have the upfront capital, you don't have the capability to build it or to operate it, and/or the provider is able to, to build it for much lower than what we can. And we check all those boxes. That's not something, in my opinion, that benefits the city or the ratepayer. Option two, which is one we were talking about with GCA, seems to make more sense to me. But I'm very open, and I'd really like to hear from everyone, to supporting something that the whole council can agree on in terms of moving forward. Councilman, morning.
Thank you. So I want to kind of regress and go back a little bit in terms of my position as far as desal, the Inner Harbor, you know. At the last vote that we had, I voted no. I voted no, and I stated the reason why I voted no, is because unfortunately, whether Kewitt is a good organization or, nothing personal, but I lost faith in their ability to partner with us for several reasons. As I mentioned before, we went through this entire process when we were looking at the 10%, 30%, 60%, and trying to judge what the cost would be. And maybe that was incorrect. And when I look at staff and how staff directed us to basically sit through two-hour meetings with that individual that sat down and explained to us what would happen, and it just didn't go down that way. And I think that's where, in my opinion, the train got off the tracks. And so I look at what's the next step, because we have to have a next step here. I think it's important. I want to use an analogy, which I think, I hope everybody understands, but when we talk about great basketball players, Michael Jordan, Kobe Bryant, we always call them a triple threat, right? Well, the city, if we're going to be a great city, we have to be what I call a triple threat. We've already, we hung our hat on surface water. We've done the most that we can in terms of trying to make surface water work for us and meet our needs. That take-or-pay contract that we have right now, we're short, so we actually, I think staff went through and got us another 10 MGD through Formosa, is that the right company?
Yes.
So we got creative, we've been creative. Now, we stepped up, and we've looked at groundwater. And we bought 23,000, or we're in the process of looking at 23,000 acres, we have 250 acres, we've got some other wells along the New Oasis. So we explored that. And with that, there's some positives and there's some negatives. And we're starting to see some of the negative parts of putting our eggs in that groundwater basket, right? Now, it comes to the Inner Harbor project and desal. That's another aspect that gives us the ability, I believe, to be well-rounded and be a triple threat. For the most part, we spent an inordinate amount of time going through and working and talking with the public about whether or not it would harm the environment. And I think most of council felt like we were briefed adequately on that. So now, we're at this decision point where we've got to go ahead and move forward. And this might be an accounting question, it might be a business question, but in my opinion, in my world, when it comes to assets, and I definitely look at option number one and three as being a favorable asset or, or direction, because we own it. I think it's a little bit, and I think this is what the, our raiders are saying, is that we take the risk of getting involved in something, and we don't own it, we rent it for a period of time. And yes, I know that sometimes when I look at contracts and I say, okay, they have a lease agreement in place, it's long-term, that I'll consider that as an asset, but it's not as strong as if you own it. At the end of the day, when you buy a car and you lease it, or you lease it, you got to give it back at some point. So options, to me, options one and three are the options that I'm looking at. I feel that it's important, and I've been asking since we convened in that last meeting to come back and take a look at who was in the second position. So that's pretty simple for me. That's where I think, where I'm headed. I think we need to continue to try and, and we're so far along with this process that we need to be able to complete it. And so with that, again, I'm strongly, my, because I think we're here to give our opinion and talk about what are we going to do? And my option is one and three. So I want to thank everybody for their time, and I would like to explore those opportunities more. I'm not for option five, which is to do nothing. I think at this point, doing nothing could hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Vaughn.
Okay, you said that we had spent $43 million, and that you expected to spend the whole 50, correct?
Up to 50 million, yes, ma'am.
So what's left to spend if you've already let go, or you aren't doing anything with Kewitt, Freezing Nichols, what's left to spend? I'm trying to figure out what that other seven millions...
So we still have a, as an example, with our Ny House, which was our pilot plant provider, we have a six-month lease on all that equipment that we haven't completely built out. So there's other elements tied to that pilot plant that we still have to demobilize, send stuff back. So I don't know what that cost looks like yet. It's going to be under 50, but that's a good placeholder right now. But Freezing Nichols...
When's that lease up, that six-month lease that you had?
I want to say it was November, November, December.
And you don't remember what you leased, what the lease was? I'm just curious.
Well, we received it in May timeframe, May-June timeframe, and it's a six-month lease, so it's around...
But you don't know what the lease amount was?
I don't have it on hand, ma'am.
I'd like, I'd like to know that. I'd like to know that. I'm just trying to figure out what these other costs are. That's important to me. And the other thing I want to ask is Gulf Coast, you know, when we talked to them, they were going to be, we were going to be talking about wastewater reuse. So how did they get involved in this? Who initiated them to come in and partner, is my understanding, with Kewitt? Who initiated that?
So they, they had, I've been in some of the meetings with the reuse, and they, they had reached out to us, and we had reached out to them regarding the, their interest in this project. And they expressed that they were wanting to transition, or they were interested in transitioning into water treatment. So I had a meeting with the GCA team just to talk about the project and what their thoughts were, and they expressed an interest. So then we've had follow-up meetings to just talk about how that relationship might work, similar to how we met with Axiona to gauge their interest in continuing, as well as other individuals, just to see what they think.
Okay, as far as Freezing Nichols goes, I have a really bad taste in my mouth on Freezing Nichols, so I really don't care if you eliminate that contract. I'm just saying it, nobody else may say it, but I'm going to say it. Because I think that's one of the reasons we're in the position we are now, because we didn't get the real cost. Here's my problem. These look like some good options, actually, but here's my problem. We still don't know the cost.
Right.
We're still the same place we were before when I said, I want to know what the cost is. Is it going to be $1.2 billion? Because our ratepayers are not going to know what they're going to pay. We don't have any contracts with industry. Industry wants it. They haven't stepped up and said, hey, I want it, let me do a contract. So we're going to go get this water, we're not going to have anybody to sell it to. If we, if it's ours, we're going to have to pay for it, and it falls back on our citizens every time. And that's my concern. I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, there's answers that aren't answered, questions that aren't answered, Mr. Sanoni.
Right, because we, right, we don't have the information to answer them. It's not that we're not trying to, but it's just, like, if we went to number two bidder Axiona, that's one of the default, that's one of the issues there, is we still don't know what the cost is.
No, we have no clue.
It could be the same or more, or less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have no clue. The only, huh, design build?
Right, and this, in the process the council chose, and that we recommended, and the council selected the last term, was this progressive design build, and that's different than the design bid build. If we, if there was a choice to go the other way, it would have taken longer to produce the product. But that's how we do our roads and other smaller buildings. So it's designed, there's a, there's a professional engineer's estimate, we put it out for bid, the bid pricing comes in, and generally, it's within that engineer's estimate or less. That's not the process we used here.
Yeah.
And so that's where we're at.
Well, and it's for me, I don't care if the city owns it. That doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
And I certainly do not want them to operate it. I'm just being honest. They want our opinion, so we should all be saying, do we want them to operate it? I do not.
Right.
I think you have enough on your plate already, and the cost for operating it, we're guessing that, too. And to look at the other plants around the states, it is very expensive to operate and maintain these desal plants, very. I mean, there was one that was, had, the state had to give them money. I think it was California, maybe it's Carlsbad. We saw it in the news a couple of weeks ago. So that's a real concern for me. I'm not being a Debbie Downer, I'm just saying, my concern is the cost, that has not changed, it hadn't changed. So, I mean, we don't, we don't have a clue what it is. We still don't.
We don't? You're correct, you're right. And you and I have talked about that before, the other part, which is, the city doesn't have to own and operate and run all the water projects. Many cities, many water authorities buy through take-or-pay contracts water. So it's, some of those other options are ones that have merit, which is we just do a take-or-pay contract for water. And then we're not in that operating business, so...
No.
We don't know if the cost is cheaper or more expensive, because we don't have a proposal in front of us right now, but it's an option.
Okay, and the other thing is, you know, I keep hearing you say Nuasis River Authority. What were y'all wanting Nuasis River Authority to do with any of these projects?
I think Nuasis River Authority, similar to GCA, is another entity that could, in theory, take over the contracts, take over the permits, land, and perform the work.
Okay. I can't, I can't speak for them, but I can't imagine with the big project, they've got Harbor Island, that they would even want to do that, but I just wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, Councilwoman, earlier I said we weren't sure, but Nick reminded me that Nick did speak with John Byram, who's here today with us, both are John and Nick, and they said they would, and they would consider it. I don't think he said, heck yeah, but he said they'd consider it. They consider evaluating it, meaning they could take over the project. We could turn everything over to them, and they could...
Yeah, considering it and saying heck yeah are two different things.
Right.
I say I'm going to consider a lot of stuff.
Right.
I guess that's, I'm without words here, because to me, it's the same thing. I don't know what the cost is. I don't even have an idea what it's going to be. And I'm worried about our ratepayers. I'm not worried about the industry, they got lots of money, you know, but I am worried about our ratepayers.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So I guess, I'm not sure why you're not saying this, I'm not sure why you're not saying this, but when I hear that, and I, I under, it's fine, I understand, I think we all have a concern for the cost, but we have to go down one of these paths to find that cost. So why, why aren't y'all saying that? I mean, in other words, you don't have a, this isn't a, you know, catalog of, let me open it up and, and see what does desalination cost? We just learned, to your point, that the cost that was given to us was very high, right, compared to other things. So if we want a cost, we've got to, we've got to choose, like, one of these options to look at. And to your point, Councilwoman, if you're interested, it sounds like in something the city wouldn't be owning, right, which is option two and four. Hold on.
Mayor, it doesn't matter to me, it really doesn't matter. That's my big issue for me. But I'm wondering, can you not go to a cost not to exceed amount? Would you look at that?
Can we do that?
Yeah, that would be, would that be a CM, a construction manager at risks?
We could even do that under progressive design build, where we set a cost threshold, but we have to be flexible in the scope. Because if we, if we dictate a certain, let's say, just keep it as a 30 million gallon a day plant, and we set a not-to-exceed amount, they may or not be able to achieve that. So we have to be flexible. They may come back and say, we can do it for this price, but maybe we only get 25 million gallons a day.
Right, but you're still setting a cost. You're still setting a limit, a ceiling.
That's absolutely available under the existing progressive design build, and...
Well, because you think about it, we all have costs not to exceed. There's only so many we can spend as families. Government should not be any different. They entrust us to spend their money. We should not be any different than that. It's just a question, just an option.
Well, and keep in mind, too, that the capital cost upfront doesn't necessarily dictate your cost to the ratepayer. So the operational expenses also play into that. So usually, if you go into, let's just say, into a not-to-exceed amount, and you maybe get lesser quality products, you reduce the facility size and type and materials, et cetera, you may compromise some of those, so you may pay more operational expenses over time. So you, it doesn't necessarily equate to lower cost to the ratepayer. So just keep that in mind. Setting a not-to-exceed doesn't necessarily equal less money over time.
And I get that, but the last thing I want to do is go do a desal plant and get products that aren't up to par, because you're going to pay for it in the future, I know that. So that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying there can be a amount. I mean, we shouldn't just say, hey, spend whatever you want. That's basically what we did with, with Kewitt, 1.2, and it's probably going to be more than that. I...
Were you going to say something?
No, I mean, that wasn't the case, but I understand the sentiment. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so Councilwoman, you said you're not necessarily against city owning and operating. It's, okay, I'm not going to put you down for that. Right. Councilman Barera.
Am I going to get to speak again because of, on the other part of the presentation?
Yes.
So we also don't know, or we haven't been able to determine the cost of option number five.
That's correct. That's a big, that could be a big cost. Do nothing, you know, but we do have, later in the presentation, we're going to show you alternate water projects that are in development, so...
But yeah, and we don't know, we haven't determined what the cost is of any of the alternate water to project.
We have, we, some of them have better estimates, yes, than others.
But they're estimates.
Yeah, but like I said, some of them are more, if you just take, say, for instance, the Evangeline project, we're getting better information to be able to determine what that project will cost.
But it's an estimate.
That's right.
Yeah, it's an estimate.
Yeah.
Right.
So we don't, we, you know, that's my point. We don't, but we don't, we haven't determined the, the cost of option number five, which would have no rate impact on industry. I mean, the feesment is not going to have any rate impact on industry, anybody that has an IDA.
Because they're outside the city limits?
Yes.
Based on the legal input we're getting, that would be correct.
So the ratepayers or the citizens of Corpus Christi are going to have to bear the cost of the feesment. I just want to repeat that.
Yeah, that's, well, based on the legal advice, that's correct.
Okay, so in addition, the, I hate the timer going off when I'm stuttering. The, in addition, the cost for producing 80 million gallons a day, I guess the, the cost is going to remain consistent, or the cost is going to increase, because even if employees, even if individuals are curtailing, the, and I'm going to say that again, the cost of the overhead remains the same. Example is that when we brought on GC, Gulf Coast Coast Ventures, everybody's rates went down.
That's correct. Because they bought so much water that, you know, we brought in more revenue, and then everybody else's rates went down.
Everybody's rates went down. So now, we do know that if we do nothing and we go into curtailment, everybody's rates are going to go up.
Well, the way curtailment works is just that, is that you force reduction in water use by higher pricing. So there's no valve, we're not turning our valves and not delivering water. We don't have that tech, we don't have that in our system. There's no valves to turn off people's water, but you do it by higher pricing. So we'd work with the city councils to set a new price for water, hoping the market and market pressures would drive reduction in use, because there's no valves. We're not, we can't turn off E.O. water, or Exxon's water, or, you know, Whataburger's water.
And we've talked to the military, that they said that curtailment would be very, very difficult for them, as well as the escalating cost.
Can you repeat?
The Army Depot.
Yeah, it would be, they, it would be a problem for them, for them as well.
You know, so I understand that the Army had basically stated that the escalating cost would be very, very difficult for them to continue to operate.
That would probably be the same for many businesses, correct, in industry?
So, well, the residents, I choose to live here, so I'm going to go ahead and pay whatever it is. I might, if I have to pay $70, then I'm going to pay $70, because I choose to live here. But as far as a, a, as far as in a capitalist society, if a industry decides to invest here, and there's a escalating charge with using less, less, less product, then they're going to personally make a decision to leave, including the military, including the companies that manufacture ibuprofen, including the companies that manufacture medical equipment, medical prostheses, then, so, so all of those would have to consider moving somewhere else. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Campus.
Oh, well, I was waiting, because I've already spoken once, but can I go ahead and let Councilwoman Paxton go before I do?
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I was very curious to see what the presentation today was going to be about, because when we visited this last, we were told, basically, if we didn't move forward with Amendment Five, it would, it would have some pretty serious consequences, like finalizing contracts. We wouldn't move forward with these. So I was interested to see the information with that being the previous understanding. What I don't see in any of these slides is a big departure from the scope, cost, and basic elements of the project. And how could we really? Because it's the same project. And so I would argue, I've heard some colleagues say that we don't, you know, I think the mayor said it a moment ago, that the only way we could determine the cost is to actually pursue one of them. And I would argue that, you know, once upon a time, I had to buy a piece of equipment, and I had three sellers offer to sell me that equipment. And what I discovered was all those costs were a little bit different. But when I went to the actual manufacturer, the true cost of that product was the same. They were just passing on their cost to me. So this project has a reasonable parameter for which it will cost. So regardless of who offers to sell it to us, it will be the same reasonable parameter for this project. So whether that's option one, two, three, four, we are still basically going to pay the same semblance of the same cost that previously, in the last several weeks, we have said was too high. I think we all, you know, several of us have said, "That's just too high." Only now, because we did make a decision, we did say that's too high, we would like to pursue other options, now all those same costs are even higher, because now we have this old debt. Now we have fragments of a project that we stopped. So I think we could all reasonably say, project options one through four is going to be the same or higher than what we said no to previously. If another group wants to come in and ask to take it over completely, that's up to them, but then they'd have to find the customers. And that's a problem. Because what we did, Mr. Zanoni, after we made a decision, we said that cost was too high for the, for the benefit that we were getting. And when I say "we," I say the majority, it was a vote. What we did was we very quickly, earnestly focused on all the other projects. And skipping ahead in the, in the book here, in the presentation, that has given us a pretty decent yield of almost 70 million gallons of water that we, that we're ready to take. We have moved efforts towards that. So now we're putting us, ourselves in a position where we have focused our efforts on these other projects, and we are going to reap the water that we need from these other projects. Now are we looking at spending the same money that's too high for water we've already secured? We don't have customers at this point yet, and I say that tentatively. I think on our next council meeting, we have an action item that's going to secure a long-term, sustainable, feasible, reliable project for marine desaline. We all know that that's the future, but we don't have to be the ones to pay for it in overhead. So I would argue, we know the costs of option one through four. You may not know it to the exact dollar, but we know it's above the budget that we've wanted to, to pay for. And we have made incredible progress. And the one thing that I don't see in these presentations is the fact that none of these options prevent curtailment. So that shouldn't actually be, no offense, what was said a minute ago from Mr. Barrera, these don't, these don't prevent curtailment. That's the reality. We're talking about a long-term water supply, which we're going to take action on one of those options next week, on Tuesday. So for me, I, I'm interested, because this is new information, but none of it actually changes the project. And as far as setting a cost not to exceed, we could set a dollar amount, and you said we'd have to have some flexibility on that. But if I was to say, "I'm willing to pay 600, 700 million for a marine desaline plant," I would not want them to come back and say, "Okay, I can do that, but for 10, maybe 20 million gallons a day, because now my cost willingness is going to decrease." So I don't think that it's wise to even try to put an unrealistic expectation on a project, because I don't want to be a bad partner with these vendors. I don't want to walk up to KeyWet, Nuaces River, GCA, anybody and say, "I insist on you meeting this cost," when I know you can't. That's not good business.
Councilman Roy. Oh, you were next. Yeah, let me go back to you, Councilwoman Campus. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, you know, we're still getting information, just up to last night. We were asked about the independent far, far-field modeling and what the modeling was done, so no, it's not conclusive. And we still don't know that. So the other thing is, let me get this straight. So when we applied for the loan, we did not have any guaranteed way to pay this. We didn't have, I mean, you know, obviously, we didn't have a pay-or-go contract with our industrial users, because it's, again, it's back on the water user. So whatever we're doing right now, we have to pay. The heavy industrial uses that uses more on, on the water department's terms is 51% of our water, 51, based on, on y'all. I, I believe it's way more than that, but we're going to go ahead and base it on what the water department says right now, which is, industry uses about 51, if not more, percent of our water. But yet, the bottom line is that the cost goes back to us, the 300,000 customers, residential customers, that are here. So anyway, I, I still feel that the, the place where the inner harbor is, you know, being looked at still needs an independent review. I don't think we, we have concluded with that. I also cannot, again, believe that we don't have a take-or-pay water contract, except for the one that we had with Exxon. And then they came back and renegotiated, because I believe it was 25 MGD. Then they just came back last year and lowered it to half. So again, we go back, we make these contracts, and then we say, "Okay, you're excused," you know, or else they would have been continuing to pay the 25 MGD, just like we have a contract with our residents. We don't go back and say, "Oh, well, you know, since, you know, industry is paying more, we're going to let you pay less," until just now. But right now, as a matter of fact, I'm, I'm looking at, at some of the, the people out there, and even to this day, to this day, we still have, I think, at least three industries still fighting their, their water utility rates. And you know why? Because they're outside the city limits. Again, not fair, not right. One of them is Linden Basel. They're right here. And they are still petitioning their water rates. So they may have, you know, all this money, but yet, because they do have the right, and I don't blame them, they have the right to petition, which they are, but again, it, it becomes unfair to the water user. So I'm still a no on this. We still don't have a final amount. And thank God that we did move because of our Councilwoman Vaughn moving on pretty quickly on these groundwater wells, that we are getting a whole bunch of water at a fraction of the cost. So, and it was because of her direction and, and us as a council agreeing. So again, we've already voted on this. We already said no. It was six to one, so I don't even understand what we're here for.
So I'm, I'm sorry, can y'all please stop? Thank you. So the reason we're back here, Councilwoman, is because multiple people said, "We're not against desaline." And, and, and those were people that voted, took the same vote, and we respect that. But, but it was said multiple times by multiple council members, "We're not against desaline, but maybe the price." "I'm not against desaline, but whatever, location or what have you." But that's why it's back. And, and we're here to make, we have to make a decision, not today, but we're here to give direction. We have to move forward. And, and there must be a solution. If we do not move forward with one of these options, we are responsible for the long term. That is our job. So, so it's part of this, this conversation, so, but that's, that is why. Yes.
Okay, and I do, I do want to also make a, a statement about our, our water situation. The reason that we are, you know, at the state and, you know, everyone else is looking at us, it's because, for one thing, we never stated what we actually needed in water. We keep saying, "We're running out of water, we're running out of water," but what does that mean? I mean, I believe Councilman Barera just mentioned that our water department is based on 140 MGD, that it can take 140 MGD to process. Is that correct? Yeah, so, anyway, is that correct?
Nick Winkleman, interim chief operating officer, CCW. Councilwoman, one thing that, that we need to look at, we've got to look at both treated water, right, and, and raw water. So treated water today, Owen Stevens produced about 84 million gallons a day. Raw water sales, typically, it's in that 20 to 25 MGD, right? Improvements, our strategic plan at Owen Stevens was to get, to improve the plant to be at a point to have a reliable treatment capacity of 135 MGD.
Okay.
And that number is, so Pape Dawson did a water master plan for us. That number is included in that master plan. One thing that number didn't include, it included residential growth. It didn't include...
And what is that number? What is a number that is our goal to reach? Because I asked you that last week. I asked you, what is the goal of Corpus Christi Water Department? Our water goal?
So the, the short-term goal is to have enough water where we can meet the demand...
The amount, no, I need...
To avoid level-one water emergency.
Okay, but it is, but, but Nick, isn't it based on what the western reservoir fills? That's what, or, what is it?
Yeah, Councilwoman, let's have Esteban real quick.
Okay.
Does the issue...
But, but that's what it is. It's because we're basing it on the western reservoir, not on the actual amount that we need for our area.
No, well, let me, so the issue is, what's our firm yield? How much water should we have to let businesses operate, to let us water our lawns, to maybe bring on a new customer or two? And we have that number. This is the maximum amount of water we should always have. That's called the firm yield. And what's that amount, Esteban?
189,000 acre-feet of water. So that's our firm yield.
That's about how many MGDs about then? 185 or so?
Yes.
So we need somewhere between 185, 190 MGD available every day to where we're not in this predicament. We wouldn't have any water restrictions. Businesses wouldn't be worried about, that's called the firm yield. That's when I first started there, six years ago, that was discussed a lot, because we were in the process of advancing this project or not. So today, we're much less than that, right? Because the western reservoirs are...
Yeah.
Are down to about 12, 13%.
Right, we're, we're much less than that. And aren't we, aren't we using only between 120, 125 MGD? I mean...
So it varies. Like, we've been discussing it, 100, between 130 today, around 113, depending upon the season. The, the temperature raises that in the part. To your question of a level-one water emergency, it focuses, the emergency focuses on what we've been talking about, to meet our demands, not, so that, that is the key point. At 180, 180 days of not meeting our demand is when we enter into a level-one water emergency. The issue is, and this is what I've been preaching for a long time, is that the reservoir system is so large, it, it makes up a lot of our supply. We can't, all these other supplies are needed to add to the system. We talked about this. Councilwoman Scott made a good point by saying the "and." These projects that we're bringing on, such as seawater desalination at the time, was to give a backbone to our entire system, so that we can make it through these tough, tough times.
Okay.
This is unprecedented where we stand with our drought. And I have to be one to stand up and, and say that. This is unprecedented to what we've seen throughout the entire state. This is kind of like when, I was a watermaster in the 2011, 2013 drought of record. Other communities from North Texas was fighting this, and they didn't know what to do. But the city of Corpus Christi learned from that and started planning that all the way up into the 2017, 2016 time, with seawater desalination being the backbone. Now, we've moved from that to try to diversify our system. And that is the importance from a water resource point of view. And you can see that through the entire state of Texas with other cities the same size. It's the diversification.
Okay.
And so, that "and" point was one of the best things that was coming out of the council at the time, is to diversify our system.
Okay. But the big difference for Corpus Christi or the coastal bend is our water customers. No one else around the state of Texas has over 50% of their water being used by industry. And the, okay, let me just finish. Okay. So, it's happening all over Texas because we are getting lots of industry that uses an excessive amount of water. It's not the residents, it's not people using the water. It is industry that uses the water. And it just, it's not having, you know, heavy, you know, I'm talking about all, you know, we're talking about, you know, these-
Councilwoman, we, I know the, oh, it went off.
Anyway, I'm just saying that there's a big difference in our area. And it's not just residents because it's not for the growth.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Who do we have here? Councilman Scott? Did you have your light on?
No.
Okay. All righty. Okay. So, I think we're, I think we're good now.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Councilman Scott?
Multitasking poorly. All right. Here are my thoughts. I think it's a wonderful time to pass on negotiating take-or-pay contracts when we may not have any water to provide the take-or-pay contract. But I do think it'd be an interesting conversation to tie these take-or-pay contracts into a new water supply, you know? Right? Hey, we're going to, we're going to provide a drought-proof water supply system, and we need, we need you guys to step up to the plate and sign a contract that'll provide it security to be able to repay that. So, that's my thought. Number two, how much, how much, the general thought is, how much is the Harbor Island water going to be?
John Byram, it's probably similar to the price. We're estimating for this one's about $11, $12.
Yeah. I think John, when he presented last, he said it'd be in the range between 10 and 15, I think, is what he said was kind of worldwide range.
I'm fascinated by the concept of to provide $2.7 million for an opportunity to buy $15 water. I'm using the high end because it helps my cause when we have a project that can make $9 water. So, I also, I'm deeply concerned about what I believe to be unrealistic expectations on new water timelines. So, I'd ask us to be very sensitive to that. I'd like to see what we think those timelines are, not what the developers are. Man, what a we's. Here are my thoughts. I would desperately avoid saddling the ratepayers with $8 a month for 10 years. I think that's a bad deal, and I think our ratepayers would be very unhappy with that. I would prefer to own. I don't know about operate. I just think it's good to have an asset on your books. I would use to the best of our ability an attempt to use the $50 million we've already spent. And I don't disagree. It's time to go get a price. I think it takes a little more money to get a price, and little is relative, right? And I want to avoid losing customers. I think at some point, if our large ratepayers, our large water users do leave the system, that's really bad to the rest of us. We're all going to have to pay more. So, if you were looking for direction for Mark, I will reiterate, and I think it's good to continue this conversation. I think we have an obligation to ratepayers to flesh out all these alternatives. I like, I would encourage options one and two. I think they deserve to be reviewed further. I think they, I think our ratepayers are going to want us to look that, look at those very closely before walking or moving on. And if it takes 30, 60, 90 days to do that, I think it behooves us as, you know, keepers of the water to evaluate. So, if it were me, Mayor, I would, I would ask that we continue to evaluate options number one and number two. And I understand Councilmember Roy says three. I don't, I don't have any heartburn on the other one either. I just think one and two are the ways to go and deserve a lot of time and energy that will eventually get us to a price. I did have one question. The curtailment surcharge, that can be used for what? Not the curtailment, what's the surcharge?
Oh, the one that the industry pays?
Yes, sir.
The .31 cents per 1,000 gallons that self, you know, they self-impose on their bills. But that's, that can be used for construction of a new water project.
My sense or my understanding, it's only drought-proof?
Right. Well, that was in the language. It'd say a drought-proof water source, and we believe a groundwater that's 8,000 feet down that's been there.
Sure. All right. So, it's the city's position that groundwater meets the guidelines of the contract signed with those industrial sources?
Yes.
My sense is they would disagree, but that's a-
Yeah, the capital cost of it, yes.
Yeah, I get it. That's an argument for another day. All right. Mayor, I would pursue one and two. I'd spend some time and energy looking at the Axionna opportunity, the Gulf Coast Authority. I don't know why we wouldn't. Other than, you know, if we're done, we're done. But I think it does behoove us as a body to look at those. And then, if others have three, I would certainly understand. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Roy?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing. You know, Councilwoman Vaughn, when she brought up the point about whether we own or don't own, as I stated earlier, I look, and I like options one and three, but at the same time, I think option four, I don't know Gulf Coast Authority, and it sounds like some of the council members talk about what their scope has been in the past and what they've done. So, I can't really speak to that. I don't have enough information. But at the end of the day, it goes back to, I think, every council member here has made a comment about the cost. And that's what, that's where we ended up hitting a brick wall before, was not really understanding or having the comfort to be able to go far enough based on the cost. So, I definitely think, and one of the things I, you know, I've heard you say, and me personally, I would be careful about this, is that when it comes to trying to nail down a cost, you're saying, okay, if we try and say that it's going to be 900 million, well, we got to be careful because maybe we'll only get 27 MGD or something of that nature. But when we look at the way the city operates on a normal basis, we've done that before. You know, when we go out there and we look at that we're going to spend a lift station or whatever we're going to do, we generally, we have that cost in mind. We manage to that cost. You guys manage to that cost. I don't understand the rationale on why you want the wiggle room. I mean, I know it's hard to find it down to a penny, you know, as far as this is what the cost is going to be, but we certainly should have an idea what it takes. And I mean, historically, looking at the other projects that have taken place, just looking at everything that has happened, and I said this before, I don't want to be the city that paid more for a project than anybody else in the world. And that does concern me. So, again, I'd be really careful about sitting there saying that you don't think that you could put that onus on the builder, whether it be option number one. They should know that, okay, we think we can build this thing for X amount. And if there's something that comes up, we're reasonable. This council's reasonable. And we've always agreed with that. We have it. It happens all the time. When you guys come back and say, okay, yeah, we ran into an issue with that lift station on Williams, and it's going to take extra money, and we've laid those extra dollars out because we have an understanding. And there's, there's a reason behind asking for those additional dollars. So, that's all I'm asking. We got to be good stewards. I really believe we can get this thing, that we can take the next step. But everybody has to be prudent in terms of the way that we look at this project. And again, I want to stress the point that I think that we can come up with a dollar amount and at least target that a little bit better than what we've done before. But every time we nail that down to sit there and say, yeah, but we don't know, that's where we got ourselves in this place in the first place because it went. I mean, I don't have to remind everybody what the cost went from. But when we're sitting there at the end of the day, and somebody's going, well, you know what, another council member said, they had a conversation, it could be up to 1.5 to 1.8 billion. That's not the type of communication that we need to have, and that's, it's going to be difficult to get behind a project when we can't even get in the ballpark for that. So, thank you.
So, Brett, clearly, the number-one issue, regardless of option, is cost. And setting a ceiling, I think, is something that we could start with and should start with, you know, with whatever we do and whatever direction we go in, and then work from there, you know? But if that is stated, you know, in a contract or the agreement and what have you, then at least we know where we're, what we're working towards and not over. So, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Just a couple of things. You know, we keep saying, $8 for defeesment, the ratepayer's going to go up. Yeah, it probably will. But if you go 1.2 billion or more, your rate's going to go up too, and nobody keeps talking about that. And the curtailment thing, you know, we need to quit scaring the public. This has been such a divisive issue that we need to quit scaring the public. It has nothing to do with the D-SAL on curtailment. We are in a drought. And until we get about, out of that and get more water sources, which we are doing, thank you, Mr. Sinoni. The other thing is, Sylvia, thank you for bringing up the firm yield. Has 189,000 acre-feet always been what we strived for?
In the six years I was here, that was set six years ago, did it go up a little bit then? When we did some work my first couple of months there? But Esteban, can you answer the question?
Just curious.
I think we raised it a little bit, or did we decrease it back then?
Yes. So, you can decrease a firm yield based upon volumetric surveys we do every five years with the Texas Water Development Board. They evaluate our sources. Drought of records can, such as the Colorado River in 2011 and 2013, drove the firm yield down. So, as we've been describing, we are one source, a surface-water-based system, no matter if it's a reservoir or a runner of the river rights or the contracts we have from Lake Texana. Those go into the firm yield analysis, and those can be decreased because of droughts and volumetric surveys on our reservoir. So, it has decreased.
I'm just trying to find out if this is what it's been for the last five years?
Yes.
Did it change? It has been for the last five years 189,000?
Yeah, it's been the same for the last five years. But six years ago, did we drive it, did we reduce it or increase it?
2016, when we got back to, we decreased it.
We decreased it?
Decreased it.
Decreased. So, it was higher at one point, now it's a little lower.
And those come from the volumetric surveys, so you know what's in your, in your reservoir, so then that goes to your firm yield, what you can expect in a drought of record.
Okay. I just wanted to know if this was a new figure or-
No, it's been out there.
-we've been working with this the whole time?
Yeah, correct.
And it will change as we get data in, and over time, the number can change because we're a surface-water-based system.
Okay. And I just want to make sure, industry's important. You know, some things have been said, we do want industry here, we need it here. So, to think that it's not important, and I know they use most of the water, but that's just the way it is. And if we want to grow in economic development, we have to have industry, and we don't want to lose jobs. So, it is important. Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez, and then we're going to move on to page 15.
Okay. That was actually what I was about to suggest, is moving on to the next subject because we need to focus on the items that would help us avoid curtailment. None of the options associated with D-SAL and the inner harbor would have helped us avoid curtailment because it doesn't deliver in this, in the amount of time that we need it for. So, really, the two projects I see that are most, that can get us water in the quickest amount of time are the Evangeline Water Aquifer and wastewater reuse.
Right. And our own wells on the Wastes River.
Well, I understand those wells, but that water's not great.
Correct.
And I'm concerned that because there's no groundwater control district in Oasis County, that I think it's unrealistic to expect we can get 30 million gallons a day from 150 acres of land.
That's 250 acres, Councilman.
Oh, sorry, 250 acres.
Correct.
Okay. We're looking at 25 million gallons a day from 23,000 acres-
Correct.
-in San Tricia.
That's correct.
Which complies with the groundwater control district's requirements.
Correct.
Currently. Could change.
Right.
But currently, it meets those demands.
Correct.
It seems unrealistic to expect that's more water from less land in Wastes County.
We're going to, Councilman, not to interrupt, but we're going to have our hydrogeologist, Steve Young, make a presentation to City Council.
Well, that was my next question.
Yeah, he's going to come and present. So, we're not the experts at that. He is, and he's on our team to advise us. So, he'll tell you the answer to that question.
Right. And it's not great water.
That's, that's public knowledge, right. It has high TDS or salt.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure, we need to focus, this, these options with the D-SAL in the harbor, okay, we need to put that to the side and focus so we don't get into curtailment.
That's correct.
Because, I mean, aside from the residents, and I appreciate what Councilwoman Gompals is talking about in terms of residents, but, you know, we need, we made these deals with industry. They're here. They're our customers. We need to take care of them.
Yeah. Industry, ratepayers as well, just like a residential account.
Well, yeah, but they're here.
They're here, just like-
There is an expectation. We have a contract. In some cases, in some cases, we don't, but they're here. We need to take care of it. The important thing is to make sure we don't go into curtailment.
Correct.
So, let's focus on those things. Let's not worry about things. We can, we can push off those things, and we can ask Water Development Board for some leniency. And I think they'll give it to us if we can avoid curtailment.
Ah, okay.
Okay? Okay? If you put it to the Texas Water Development Board saying, we need this money for these projects because it'll help us avoid curtailment.
Okay, I see.
Okay? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, now I do. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, so-
Let's go on, yeah.
Yeah, before, just to kind of summarize, so I've been taking notes and listening, but I think we have clear direction to terminate the contract with Keywit. And we need certainty so we can move forward. The SWIF loan, unless council objects, we're going to do what Councilman Hernandez recommended, which is put a request in to see if officially to the board, can we reuse the SWIF loan for an Evangeline, for CC polymers, for wastewater reuse? Right. So, we'll put that request into the board. As I mentioned, the board's going to take up your request to defer the next installment to next year. They'll tell us yes or no. That board meeting will be in either November or December, and we'll know eight days before the board meeting, the recommendation from the director, the executive director, Brian McMath. Just other, two other points. The whole reason we're here, just making sure we get clear direction, is we have permits that have been issued, and they have value. We're not here just because we love this project, but there's certain things that have happened, to include, we have been issued permits, so we can put those on in the back burner for now. They have a five-year life, one of them does. And then, thirdly, we haven't talked about it yet here this morning, but we do have an option on the land that does expire in July of '26 with the option to extend the right to purchase the property in Easements for two more years with Flint Hills. So, that's another kind of, just something that has a time to it. So, right now, the option to purchase the land is through July of '26. We already paid like escrow an amount, there's no more money due. That legal contract will continue until 2026. So, I think that's a good summary of how we'll move forward. And then, we're ready, Mayor, to talk about the second part of this, which is the additional water projects that we have been working on. I do appreciate Councilman Hernandez and recent news story acknowledging that we've been working on many of these for many years, to include Evangeline. We've been studying it. We've been, we've had numerous options. We're moving, that's the number-one project that we're focused on, and as Nick will go over to make sure we don't head into curtailment. And we did have to, and it's been beneficial to go talk to the rating agencies, because go talk to the rating agencies, because I think even they thought the desal project would get us out of curtailment next November, and it's not. It would have been a longer lead project, but the projects that Nick's going to talk to us about are really going to help to bring calm, calm to the community, calm to the council, which is, we are not going to run out of water, we're doing everything we can do, including working seven days a week to make sure we're going to be okay. So with that, we can turn it back over to you, Mayor, or to Nick.
Yes, you have a comment. Council, one second, Councilwoman Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. Well, first, I would like to make a statement, I've, you know, in just tracking the progress over this project, I truly appreciate, Peter, that you've been going to the Capitol as a good advocate for this progress, to, to help rewrite that narrative and give a better description to our state partners that these efforts are to avoid curtailment. And I think we're seeing the benefits of that good message you're bringing, so thank you for being a good representative there. On that note, similarly, in negotiations with the Water Development Board, is there, what are the parameters if we were to seek someone who could sort of facilitate as a representative to help these conversations, that has lots of experience working with them, someone very specific that knows these things in and out? You know, there's got to be a representative, and I'm not, I'm not, you know, saying anything to slight our team, I'm just saying, we've got to be laser-focused and intentional on these talks.
Yeah, right. And correct, and we do have several advocates that are on the team, including our lobbyist team, Snapper and his associate are ready to go to the Water Development Board and advocate. We've used some other individuals as, excuse me, as well, that'll help us when we need that, that input to the Water Development Board.
Okay.
Yep.
Just someone that, you know.
Right.
Understands those ins and outs.
Yep.
Has our best interests and can bridge that gap really well.
Right.
Again, nothing to slight our teams, just someone with that very good.
And we do have that. Ryan, our, in the Governmental Relations Director, and I just talked about this yesterday, and making sure, they're following us step by step, because we're going to need their, their influence and guidance to help provide the best information to the Texas Water Development Board on our, on our behalf.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we're sending that best message.
Right.
You, you touched on the land purchase. Regardless of whether we determine to extend that or not, we own the permitting for the project.
Right, the permits are site-specific, so the sites, we own the permits, we don't own the property. We have it under legal contract to buy it right now, that goes until July of '26.
But if we didn't purchase?
If we didn't.
Retain the permit.
Say it again, sorry.
If we didn't purchase, we would retain the permit, because it was technically issued to the city.
Right, no, the permits are the city's, they're not, they're not the partners, they're not Flint Hills. They do belong to the city, the issue is the site-specific.
Sure.
And so, and the tie to the land, which is not ours, it's, we have it under option contract to buy.
Sure, it just, to be, you know, I just want to make sure that was ours.
That's, that's a good point. The contracts, the, I think the discharge contract, the discharge permit is a five-year permit, the intake permit is in perpetuity, so there's, there's four years or so left on the, on the, you know, the discharge permit.
Okay, thank you very much, Peter.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Mr. Sinoni, to piggyback off of that, we do need somebody that understands the Texas Water Board, and you and I have talked about that, but what we keep forgetting is we have our state representatives. They have said they're, they will reach out for us, and we have Senator Hinojosa's representative out here right now, and they will reach out for us. We have Todd Hunter, Denise Villalobos, Jimmy Hinojosa, so they will reach out for us.
Yeah, that's correct.
I hope we keep that in mind.
Yeah, good point, I should have mentioned that, is that's why when we were at the Capitol on Wednesday, we did go see Chairman Hunter.
Yes.
Just to touch base with them, tell them what we're working on, and, and so, and we know we have other delegation members, so they are, they're probably step, they're probably the first in terms of advocacy.
Yes.
And then we have our lobbyist team that knows our business well, and will help us as well. We also have individuals like Carlos Rubens, excuse me, Carlos Rubenstein, that used to work for TCEQ.
Yes, he would actually be, excuse me, a really good one to get on board.
Yeah, correct, he is, he's under contract with us today.
He is?
Yes, he is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilwoman Kent, you?
I think, I think still we're at the same point with the price tag of the Inner Harbor Desal Plan. And I just want to make something clear on my decision on me voting no on this project. A week before we voted on this project, I was already at a no because of the price tag and because of the rate pairs paying a lot more extra for water. I know that this is a good project, I know that it's, it's a bulletproof water source, and I like it, I really do. But, you know, there's been a lot of talk lately, still to this day, that why didn't City Council just went ahead and approved this to 60%? It's only going to cost $50 million. And that 1.2 billion-dollar price tag that everyone was hearing before the vote, some of my colleagues here kept on saying, "It's not going to be 1.2 billion dollars. Let them do the 60%." Well, me and Councilwoman Vaughn met with Keywit, the contractor, a week before the vote, and they told us in plain English, "If you're going to vote yes at 60%, don't think that the price tag will go down, it's going to be even more." Their own words. And then I said, "What bothers me the most is that there's so many loud people fighting for this project." And it disturbs me, because I'm not stupid, I have common sense, I know there's a lot of people have special interests of making money off this project. And I'm talking about current elected officials, and I'm talking about past elected officials. They're making money off this project, that's why this project got killed. And you know what their Zach words was when they told, when I told them that? They said, "Yeah, I say that you're right." That's what they told me and Councilwoman Vaughn, and she's my witness. So we need to get something done, but we also need to stop and remember why we got voted in, is to protect the people, to protect the tax dollar, not be self-serving. And that's pretty much it, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to page 15, our water supply projects update.
Thank you, Mayor. Nick Winkelman, interim chief operating officer. As, as all of you know, we've been working on a number of water supply projects. This is the, the list or summary of the projects that we are working on. I have a project page for each of the projects, which we'll go through, and then there's a summary at the, at the end of the table as well. First project we'd like to talk about is our Nuasis Groundwater Well Project. This project is ongoing. As you know, we received a bed and banks permit for the wells located on our eastern well field. Eight total wells have been drilled, and that's all the wells that are planned for the eastern well field. Currently, we are discharging approximately up to 8 million gallons a day, with the goal of discharging ideally 11 million gallons a day. So right now, we've done, and it's, it's been in my weekly water supply update memo, we've done a little bit of work on well one to improve the total dissolved solids from well one, so that, that well is, will not be operating again until next week. The pictures on the right are all from the eastern well field. The picture on the top left is well four, and that's at a site that's located directly adjacent to the river. You see the well discharges directly into riprap or rocks, the water goes over that riprap, it picks up dissolved oxygen, which is a benefit which we want to do as it, as it, before it enters the river. The, the picture just below it, so bottom left, that is well two, so that is a completed well, that well, it discharges, flows into a common water line, which then goes to a common outfall location. So the pictures on the right, we have six wells that discharge through that pipe and through that outfall location. You can see the top right is the water coming out of that common water line, that's 24-inch in diameter, and you can see the water rolls over the riprap and enters the river, that's the bottom right picture. Our hydrogeologist, Steve Young with Intera, has stated that the sustainable pumping from the eastern well field is 11 million gallons a day. And I just, I had to check my phone while we were talking, so as Peter said, the goal is to have him come and make a, work with council, make a presentation to council. Latest news, he's available on the 21st, so I'll work with the city manager to, to try and get that set up.
Right, that'll be good, Nick.
The western well field, currently, we have three wells that are completely drilled, and I'd like to point out that we are, they are numbered sequentially, so even though we talk about well nine on the western well field, that's really well one on the western well field. So there's the eight on the east, and then we start up. A lot is that just operational clarity helps us in the future, so. Well nine has been drilled, it has been test pumped, water quality samples have been taken. The TDS from well, from well nine has been, it's, it's in the 1,700, it's approximately 1,760 total dissolved solids. Well 10 has been drilled, we completed the test pumping this week, and we took the water quality samples, we're awaiting that data to come in. Well number 11, the drilling is complete, crews are developing that well. What you do is you develop the well further to bring in the sign, the fines and the sand to make that well as efficient as possible. Test pumping, we'd probably be test pumping, water quality sampling that, start that within a week or so. The data provided so far to Intera has suggested that the sustainable pumping there is approximately 17 MGD. One thing I want to be very clear about is as data is obtained through these water quality and pumping tests, that's shared with Intera so that they can further update the model. So when that number change or shifts with, with updated data, we'll update all of you. So I will adjust that number as per any feedback from Intera. The, the estimated capital cost, and I share that in the weekly memo, so the eastern well field, we've spent, these are cash-out-the-door expenditures, it's about 15 and a half million dollars to date. The western well field, we're about 2.6 million dollars right now. The other thing I do want to point out is we do have a $30 million grant for our Nuasis Well Program, and in fact, when we met with TWDB this week, we brought that up, and they've already shared correspondence on the next steps on, to get that money into, into our bank account as quick as possible. Next project we'd like to talk about is the Evangeline Groundwater Project. During the September 23rd council meeting, the council approved, moving forward with a term sheet, which is the basis of the contract. We are currently working diligently with Evangeline to move forward and bring that contract to council for approval as soon as possible. Our goal is October 14th, we're working to make sure we have all those deliverables in hand. If something would slip, we would notify you, and maybe have to go on the 21st, but like I said, we're not, we want to get it to you for review as soon as possible. Couple of key items with that term sheet, so it's a purchase of $7,437 for 22,789 acres of groundwater rights. What is that number? It's approximately 169 million dollars. There will be a million-dollar earnest and option payment for 120-day inspection or due diligence period, with an additional 3.25 million to be escrowed at the end of the inspection period. This body approved various contracts during that council meeting so that we can proceed with pre-engineering and also our due diligence and inspection period. As part of those, those contracts, our chief engineer, which is Pape Dawson, they will provide a schedule for the improvements, completion for the well field, and also an opinion of probable construction cost. One thing I do want to underscore is that, just like in our own well field, as wells come online, the goal is to provide water as soon as possible, so we are looking at partial delivery first, and the city manager and myself are pushing for partial delivery by November of 2026. We are looking towards Pape Dawson to confirm and, and work towards that goal. As part of this agreement, the seller is to provide clean and indefeasable title to groundwater rights. They are also to provide the required permits for this project as well. These would be permits that are non-appealable, and it would include 22 wells and including the production as well. Another big part of the, of the project is the assignment of surface use agreements. So the property is owned by different landholders. The seller has negotiated surface use agreements with those property owners to allow for well drilling, water line installation, you know, we'll need a pump station as well, so we've got to work through all that in the engineering phase. Next project is the Nuasis River Authority, the Harbor Island Seawater Desalination Project. We have an item on the council agenda, agenda for next week. It is an item to, regarding a reservation or an option fee for an amount of water to be produced from that plant. On this page, the bottom right, we've provided the, the amounts of the water and their associated reservation fee. Just to be clear, the amounts shown, this would be a one-time fee, and it would secure our right to that water once the project is built and producing water. The NRA has stated that they would be producing water by December of 2029. However, the agreement, it's a non-refundable agreement, it doesn't, it doesn't confirm construction timelines, water delivery, and it's not a guarantee of final price either. The, there are a number of permits required per the NRA, there's, there's been quite a bit of progress made on those permits. They have a draft permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, and they are expecting draft permits from the TCEQ regarding their intake and discharge permits next month, or this month, excuse me, October 2025. There's a lot happening with our reuse alternatives. As you know, and, and just to be clear, there's, Garver Engineering is working on reviewing effluent conveyance, aquifer storage and recovery, and direct potable reuse. Garver is nearing completion on a preliminary technical memo, and we hope to have that within the next couple of weeks, and ideally, we'd like to present that to council as well to share that information. Additionally, CCW staff met with our Dura Engineering this week. We met on Wednesday morning, and the goal of that meeting was to identify projects that can be moved quickly to better use or effluent. And then the third part of all of that is CCW is meeting with specific entities to talk about, to enter into contracts to purchase effluent from our, from specific plants as well. So information on that will be forthcoming, there's a lot of work happening there. CC Polymers, we have looked at this equipment, and as you know, the latest concept was the city to purchase the desalination equipment outright and to operate that equipment. The, we do have, we have a draft proposal for the equipment and process assessment. We've got to work through that with our partner, CDM Smith. As you know, any purchase of equipment, just like any house, you need to understand its current condition. One thing I do want to reiterate, the plant has never fully operated, it's not complete, so there is a cost that is required to complete the plant. Additionally, the design of the plant is 9.4 million gallons a day. What CC Polymers has told us is that they require seven MGD, so that's got to be reserved for them. The good news is, a plant can be expanded, permits would, there'd be a lot of permit work that would have to be done, and the permit, or the plant could potentially be extended, expanded to 30 or 31 MGD, which subtracts the seven, and that would leave us with 24 or so. South Texas Water Authority, we've, we've all been in contact with them, their, their last presentation to council is stated that they are, they're currently pursuing a project to develop a supply for three MGD. However, they're willing to talk to the city about upsizing that project to 13 MGD, which would give 10 to the City of Corpus Christi, and they would retain three. I would like to say that the South Texas Water Authority currently purchases water from the City of Corpus Christi. Their contract expires December 31st, and we actually met with them yesterday to work on the renewal of that contract. The other, the other key point is, the STWA team said that that plant can be expanded in 10 MGD increments. The focus of our discussions with STWA, per their request, has been on their current contract first. They want to make sure that that is, that is taken care of. Again, the contract end date on that is December 31st. Again, the contract end date on that is December 31st. EV Ranch, this is a project that's been, it's been around. The city manager and myself met with representatives of them on September 22nd. They said they had details regarding a new proposal for us, and that they would come back in mid-October to meet with us further and go over those details of that project. One thing to remember, that, you know, that project, it's, I think it's 40 to 50 miles away from the city. It would require an extensive pipeline. Initially, their proposal was to construct the wells, treat the water, and pump treated water to us. Believe their latest proposal is, and we need more details, but is for, the city would actually step forward and do the capital investment to construct the wells and treat the water, and then be responsible for pumping to the city. I would like to say that there's been no test well drilled on EV Ranch. We don't have representative water quality. There's quite a few unknowns there. There's a lot going on. So I do want to summarize all of those projects in the table with special attention here. So we've got projected supply, right? That is our current estimate of volume of water provided. Project delivery date. So again, that's going to have to be updated and changed, but that's with the current information that we have. And then the last column will be comments or items for consideration, as we talked about last council meeting. There are a number of, there are a number of projects that, every project has certain considerations that need to be taken into account. So the first project, our Nuasis Groundwater Project, so if you've got sustainable pumping, 11 from the eastern well field, 17 from the western well field, that's a total of 28 MGD. It's an ongoing project, so we're partially producing some of that water right now. Full production, right, we are estimating May of 2026. Some of those consideration items that I wanted to bring up is, we are, there will be a second Bed and Banks permit required. It's a different discharge location than our first Bed and Banks permit. We're going to have to work with TCEQ on that. I would like to say that we are working very diligently regarding the river. We have Corolo engineers, they are doing additional study and analysis on the river. Some of the things that are interesting to note, and some of you may have known, but a couple of weeks ago, we shut down our well production for two days so we could do that sampling. So we've identified a number of springs and along the river that contribute to the river. The TDS of one of those springs was 10,000 parts per million. The river itself is a very complicated system. We are learning more and more about it every day, but I'm thankful to our professional partners who are diligently working to analyze the river. We are also working very closely with Nuasis County WCID Number Three, met with them this week, and we continue to work closely with them to keep them updated on our progress. The dates shown for the Nuasis Groundwater Project are without treatment. This is fully to deliver the water into the river using the river as our conveyance system. One thing to note, there is, we call it a carriage loss, carrying loss in the river. That's estimated approximately 7%. Second project, Evangeline Laguna, again, the total volume for that project, 24 million gallons a day. The goal is November 2026 for partial delivery of that water. Again, the contract calls for an inspection due diligence period. That period is 120 days. The contract conditions, those permits and the other items like the surface use agreements, those are all conditions to close, so they need to be in hand before we close. The partnership, Evangeline Laguna, has told us that they will work, start working on permits immediately, so that would be the same time that inspection period starts. And also, just a reminder, pre-engineering has started, and also survey work has started, so there's a lot of things ongoing right now. Effluent reuse, total could be anywhere from 10 to 16 million gallons a day. Just a clarification, that is using our effluent water, which ideally would reduce potable water demand on our system. We are working with professional partners, Garver and our Dura on these projects, and then CCW and the city. We are also negotiating and trying to better understand specific contracts with various entities. NRA Harbor Island, one of the options for the reservation fee is 50 million gallons a day. Again, the NRA has stated that they would be producing water in December of 2029. I would like to remind everyone that that's producing water. The city still requires a conveyance line to get the water to where we want it. So that's another project that will have to happen. One thing, during our conversations and with John Byram, he stated that if we do have our reservation fee, the city could have input on their conveyance line so that some benefits could be made by both parties on the exact location where we would connect. South Texas Water Authority, again, that's 10 MGD. There is a memorandum of understanding in place. We are working per that memorandum of understanding. And STWA will continue to furnish the data identified in that memorandum as we continue. We did receive water quality report from STWA on their first test well. And then EV Ranch, they've expressed that the total could be 28 MGD. They've also expressed it could be more. Again, there's been no test well drilled. We don't really have much data on there, and that's why you see there's a lot of blanks on that, on that slide. And that concludes the update on our water supply projects. I would like to say, you know, the concept of having a diversified supply is critical. A number of the council has brought that up. The city, you know, we're truly a surface water dependent system. The city has done a terrific job of diversifying the surface water system, and I say that because of the Mary Rose Pipeline, because of taking water from Colorado. They've done a terrific job of that. However, we know today that we really need to have other water supply in our portfolio that is more than just surface water. With that, I'll stand by for questions.
Can I just add two things, ma'am, real quick? Just, if you put that last chart back up. So we were asked on Wednesday by Fitch Ratings, how much water do you need to not go into a level one emergency? And the answer is about 60 million gallons, if we look at our water dashboard. That assumes, that 60 million, and right now, is coming from the western reservoirs. And so in the summertime, at peak production, you need about 60 million from that, those two sources to meet the total supply, to meet the demand. So 60 million is the answer, and that's, if you look at, we're pretty close to being there with the emergency water wells and the Evangeline, it's pretty close. And then if you throw, if you put in the reuse, we can probably get there. That's why I was saying earlier, we're working pretty hard to make sure we don't enter into that level one emergency. So that's point number one, is that the, how much water do we need? And recently, I think yesterday, a former council member, Greg Smith, sent an email to the council, and the council's asked the same questions, which is, well, how much water do we need, and what's going to be the price? And that'll be a presentation coming soon to city council. We're going to work with Nick and Esteban and Brett to be more clear on that, which is, we see all these projects, but are we going to do them all? Are we going to, you know, so how much water do we need? What is the rate impact? That presentation will be coming in these next, before the end of the year with the city council. But we know that these are kind of lined up here on this chart as the projects that's most progressing is at the top, and so on. So you can see by the evidence here that we're working hard to not get into that level one emergency. 60 million is the amount of water we need not to get there. That's just based on supply, demand, and our metrics over the past couple of years and that water dashboard. And then finally, one other comment on this chart and on the Nuasis Groundwater Wells, we really, and I was talking to several council members about this recently, and Councilman Vaughn especially, has brought it up, which is that this was seen as an emergency source over the decades when we've been in this predicament of being in extreme drought. And as Hernandez says, it's a smaller tract of land, 250 acres. Evangeline with similar production amounts is on 22,000 acres. So I think we have to continue to talk about the Nuasis Groundwater as an emergency source so that once the emergency's over, i.e. we get rain and the western reservoirs have more water in them, these wells get shut down. Nobody is saying we're going to keep these on indefinitely forever and every day, and they're really an emergency project. It's just to do what the city has done since the 50s, which is use wells of similar nature and similar location. And as Councilman Hernandez brought up again today, we know the water quality's not the best, but through blending, it becomes usable for our customers. So those are just two additional points in the next presentation.
Right. Thank you, Peter. And that's a great segue into a couple of things I'd like to say and ask. So what's planned, what would be, if something doesn't go forth, doesn't move forth as planned, then where are we? Because right now, you're taking 60 deficit minus 28 for the well fields, which leaves 32. Then you take 24 MGD off of that, which would be Evangeline, and then you have eight, which we actually have on the property line of Countess Ranch, the eight, those eight wells that we're going to drill.
Right.
So, I mean, in theory, that works out perfectly, but that's in theory. And so we don't know exactly, right? This isn't for certain. I mean, can we say absolutely without a doubt that Evangeline, effluent reuse, even Harbor Island, you know, I don't know, because you were just talking about, we must, we're going to have to build a conveyance, a conveyance system for that. I don't know if that is taken into account in terms of this December of 29 date. But my point is, is what happens if we don't get online with some of these as stated? Do we have that plan?
Yeah, that's what we're going to be bringing to you over these next couple of months, but the Nuasis Groundwater Wells is certain. That water's producing, we're already doing 10 million gallons, and we have, on the new, the western well field, as we call it, we have three wells drilled. So that is, there's high confidence in that one. It's actually ongoing right now, about 10 MGD a day. Evangeline will be coming to council. Everything's in order except for the land survey.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying, Peter, is there's two projects here, for example, that must abide by an MOU. So if they do not, we have to have, we have to be looking at what else, right?
Right. Yeah, so you can see in the list, I mean, we have the effluent reuse is another one that would be less than a year, I think is what we're saying here. We have South Texas Water Authority at 10 MGD, another groundwater project, which we're moving pretty quickly in our own wells project, so it's, we have demonstrated it doesn't take years to produce the water from those groundwaters.
Right.
CC Polymers, probably a little more long lead. So I think that would be.
Well, and I think this is great work. I think the staff has done amazing work because the immediate, as was mentioned earlier, you know, curtailment is real, and that is, now we're up a month, right, from, to November of 26. So we need short-term solutions, and we also need desalination, which is the longer term. Otherwise, we come right back to where we are without having that solution, right, for the future. So I think it's important that all of the pieces fit together, and curtailment has everything to do with the short term, which is what we're working on. And I do believe that the groundwater, I think there are some risks there that we've all heard about that have come forth recently, and that is concerning with the Evangeline project. I hope that that's not going to be something that sets it back, but I think all, everything, including desal, includes some risk. And Peter, what I'd like to do is ask that staff bring back, maybe at the next, your briefing next week, I would imagine, that we get a full overview of the risks associated with each of these options. In other words, you know, if this, you know, what is a risk, right, with certain, every single one of them, really, even our wells. I mean, our wells have risks also, because we just need to make sure we know and understand that, you know, if 12 MGD can't come on without building a pipeline, without an RO system after 24 MGD, are we, why isn't the RO system part of this discussion?
The, on the Evangeline one?
Right, because I thought we had talked about putting 24 MGD into the river is not, I mean, it's going to cause some problems in terms, because of the, the.
Yeah, right now, so the Nuasis Groundwater, it could turn into a RO project, but if we look at it as an emergency, short-term use, then you don't need to spend a couple hundred million for an RO system. The Evangeline, we're working with our contractors now and ones that we've used before. We're thinking you can put the whole 24 million into the system, and we don't need to reverse osmosis any of it. So that's, so that's, that's the update on that one.
And the pipeline is able to?
Well, the same thing. So the pipeline is, our consultants are saying you probably, you might not need a secondary pipeline right now. And so what we're trying to do with Evangeline is have the lowest cost impact to the rate payer.
Right.
And that is, and well, listen, I'm not making it up, but I'm listening to engineers of record, some that have worked in this project since the pipeline was built. They're telling us, and we're going to be sitting down with them next week.
That's right.
They're telling us we don't need to do a secondary pipeline, we don't need to do treatment.
Because we were told we did.
We trust the experts.
At first.
Yeah, so we're trusting the experts. So on that one, it's the cost for the water right and the production of the wells and the pumping to get it to the pipeline, and then from there, it's, there's no additional charge.
Right.
Except for treatment at the plant.
Correct. Okay, so that's why RO is not.
Yeah, no RO for Evangeline. The water TDS is 800, is public record. So today, Nuasis River, that western reservoir system, the TDS can range from 6 to 800. So 800 TDS is not unusual in our water system.
Right.
Yeah.
What was the water, you mentioned the water quality for the well that was drilled with South Texas Water? What was that?
Oh, so they, so a couple of things. First thing I want to say is, the parameters that were identified that were over the maximum contaminant levels, they are removed by reverse osmosis. But some of those parameters that were over the MCL, our maximum contaminant level, that was arsenic, it was uranium, it was gross alpha. Those are radionuclides that are naturally found in geologic formations and in groundwater, but all of those are removed by the reverse osmosis treatment system.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Being fully aware that the Nuasis Groundwater thing is a temporary thing, and we're also looking at possible desal down in the future with groundwater, brackish water desal. But it seems like you can combine some of these things with South Texas Water Authority and not have to build multiple locations for brackish water desal.
Right, that's correct.
Maybe some sort of contract with them to, you know, kind of align, and I don't know, maybe you look at the opportunity for PUA with this, you know, with South Texas Water Authority, so there's, if the concern is not long-term ownership, well, then there's maybe a possibility of negotiating something different and utilizing similar options. I'm sure that would make our state representative happy since he sponsored that legislation. Also, with effluent reuse, I know it would be a lot faster to try and get this into some sort of industrial water.
Right.
Project as opposed to making it potable, so, because then you'd have to go through all these TCEQ hoops that you wouldn't need to for industrial effluent. You know, and I've had some conversations with our industrial partners that, you know, that could be a solution so they can avoid curtailment.
Yeah, Nick was saying that earlier, that's the, of the options that are available, that's the leading one right now? That's the preferred one?
Well, I think it's something we should consider because we don't have to send all that, we don't have to build the conveyance all the way to the Nuasis River.
We're not only considering it, we're developing it, we're looking at that option to send it to an industrial customer as option number one.
I'm with you, and that's why I'm saying it here on the dice.
Yeah, good.
So I'm in concurrence with you there.
Okay, good.
And I would, I would fully endorse that option if we could do that sooner rather than later. Maybe we can beat this timeline that you have of 2027 fourth quarter.
Correct.
Okay, so if we could do that sooner, that gets us in a better position. Looking at those. Looking at those first three, you get us in a situation where we don't have to go to curtailment, it can, it can meet those needs. And then you have your midterm solutions, which is the groundwater desalination with, I don't think it'll be the 28 million gallons a day, maybe 10, 12, depending on what, you know, our Intera determines what that looks like in the future. And then also South Texas Water Authority, whatever that looks like as well. So I think there's a good plan for short-term and midterm, and then maybe Harbor Island more of a long-term. I, you know, don't get me wrong, I think '29 is ambitious, but might be a little, I'm not going to hold you to make it to that '29. I just don't think that's, I mean, with a project that size, it seems like that'd be, I'm not going to be heartbroken if it doesn't make it in '29. But, and then some of these other things could be extra. But I think all these things could be in place and prevent us from going there. And then looking forward to getting projects in place so we don't, so we can start to grow again.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Several things. First off, what you guys have done out there at the river is amazing. Y'all have done a great job. It's very impressive. I was really impressed when I saw it. I mean, you're really up there. No oil rig's got anything on you, I'll tell you. It was really nice. And if you guys haven't seen it, y'all should go out and look. Thank you, Mr. Zanoni, for reiterating it's an emergency. That's what those wells are because we have got a lot of people right now talking. There was a story done on TV on it where they're very upset. And I've been told that the TCEQ is going to come down here and check our water quality. And I shared that with you guys. Someone called and gave me that information. If it's true, I don't know, but I feel pretty sure it is. So what I'm asking you is how are you testing your water quality? Do you have, what are you doing?
Right. So first, we communicate with TCEQ frequently on the project as well. So as, as part of the, our protocol in the Bennett Banks permit, we have a water quality measuring device located upstream of our, the first discharge of our well, right? And then there was one, another device located after the first discharge. There's a third device located after the second discharge. There's, there's two wells that discharge directly into the river. And then there's that larger outfall, which I showed a picture of. And there's another device located after that outfall. So we can measure, it measures the total dissolved solids of the river. So we know what the river is ahead of our well discharge, and we know what it is after. And then we also have further devices downstream, and there's one located at our intake at Owen Stevens. I will tell you this, just in the last couple of months, I've seen the river vary anywhere from 800 TDS to 1,200 to 1,300 TDS. We've also seen where the total dissolved solids towards, you know, that last one after our wellfield was 980 TDS. Further downstream, it was 1,200 TDS. So again, it's, it's a complex system. We're learning about it every day. We're doing the study, doing an analysis, and we're watching it closely.
Well, hopefully, we're in compliance, hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm counting on that we are in compliance and with our Bennett Banks permit as well, right?
That's correct. Those are, yeah, that's correct.
Mayor, you mentioned something about the Countess Ranch, eight wells. I don't think anyone in here has heard about that. And I, Mr. Zanoni?
Can you say that again, Councilwoman?
The Countess Ranch, eight wells? That's the first we've heard of that, eight more wells that we're drilling?
On the Sutherland property?
I guess so. I don't think the council's heard about that.
Well, so there's two tracts of land, the first wellfield, which we call the Eastern Wellfield, and the Nuasis River has eight wells. And then we brought to City Council a proposal to purchase 250 acres of land. And on that site would be a total of 12 wells. So there's 12 in the second site, the Sutherland Ranch. It was higher at one point. I think Drew had talked about 16.
It was. We've worked with Intera, and it's a, current target is 12 wells on the 250 acres. I would like to say that that number could change as we drill more wells. It could maybe go to 11. But right now, the current estimate is 12.
So we're not in talks with anybody else to do any wells on anyone else's land out there?
No, that's it. There was some talk about using a budding property owner's property, but we, we're not pursuing that.
Okay, just making sure. I just wanted that.
Yeah, just 12 on the 250 acres, no more than 12. And as Nick just said, it could be less.
Okay. And because of what is going on out in that community, they're really concerned about us. I think it's so important that we be a good neighbor.
Yeah.
I wish y'all would consider going out there, maybe having a town hall and explaining to them because things go wild when you hear rumors.
Yeah.
And that, I think, is what's going on out there right now. They're concerned about their water, as they should be.
Yeah.
So just an idea.
No, that's good. You and I have talked about that before, and we'll have that, that's on our work plan to go out to the Blunts area and have a town hall to explain from our, from us, the ones that are doing the work, what's really going on. And so we'll be doing that.
Okay, good. Thank you. The Adura, I mean, that was presented to us a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Couple of weeks ago, maybe. Do you have any idea when that's going to be brought back? I know you said you had some work to do, back to council.
Correct, yeah. And a staff met with our Adura, we'll call it a workshop meeting, that was on Wednesday morning. They made some good progress. I will say, I was not there, I wasn't able to attend. We were, we were in Austin meeting with the TWDB. Yeah, exactly. So there is, there were some good action items from that, and there's still some more work to do to flush that out. I do want to reiterate, I mean, we, we are very excited about potential agreements with specific entities to utilize that affluent. We think that can be real quick. And that, those dates, you know, on that chart would be adjusted as we have more information.
So we don't have anything huge or anything that's holding that up?
I think we're all, we're all working very diligently on that. There's, there's a number of avenues at play, and we're working very diligently. And once we have something better defined, then we can come back to council. And another thing, Councilwoman, we are talking with other landowners for our conveyance or discharge line to the river from the Sutherland Wellfield that will contain the water line, the discharge.
Well, I will say, y'all did a lot of improvements out there that everyone around you should be very happy about because you tore some old houses and stuff. If you've not been out to the river, it's worth going to look. So y'all did some really good things from there. Harbor Island, I guess that's going to be a discussion we're going to be having as well. And to me, I also want to know at least close what the cost of water is going to be when we do a reservation fee on that. I want a little bit more information on that. What's happened? Did we just, Mayor, I think you were kind of involved in this, Barney Davis, have we just scrapped that? Because to me, that was a really good project.
Right. So Barney Davis is still being discussed. I think there's a meeting soon to meet with CPS Energy, who owns that power plant.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Paxson?
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to say thank you for the presentation. Really great information, and the format was very user-friendly. So thank you for that. Also, there was a question about going deeper into risks associated with each project. And I think that at the end of the day, we know what the risk is. And I, I like the track that we're on, that's, that's really publicly celebrating and saying, you know, despite risks, we're making it work. We're overcoming those risks. So I would caution us to maintain, you know, that transparency that, yes, we understood that when we pursued the Western well project, one of the challenges is the conveyance, you know, the pipeline to get it from the wells into the actual river. But we trudge forward and now look at this as one of our leading projects on this list. So I'd, I'd like us to maintain the conversation, and we understand there's risks, and this is how we're mitigating them and still being successful. So that's my two cents on that note. I agree wholeheartedly that those Western wells should be a temporary solution. And I do, and I have probably from the beginning, been a very loud advocate in favor of a long-term solution like Harbor Island as getting us past that. In the same token, though, I believe previous presentations said that we could actually take a little more out of the Western wells. And I bring that up only to say, there's a little time lapse between when we anticipate having the full volume from Evangeline or the full potential actually coming online. And I think that delta could help us carry into that as a very short-term, if that makes sense. Is that still a possibility?
So like I said earlier, as we drill each well, we are test pumping the well, collecting the data, that gets, then Intera inputs that into the model, and they update the model. So there, there's, we need to be cognizant of long-term pumping and short-term pumping, right? So if, if Intera has recommendations that we can do something short-term, we'll, we'll follow their recommendations.
Okay, that makes sense. I would say as we continue to progress in the Evangeline project, as we look at, I'm glad that we got the report that, that looks like we're pretty in a good spot to add that full capacity to the Mary Roads. So as we move into that, if that looks like it's going to take the longer end of those forecasts, maybe we continue those conversations to get, to get a higher volume from the West for a short amount of time. I really do want to stress that, and I, and I like to hear that there's potentially a town hall out there. We really have to stay good communicators with our, with our neighbors. So I'm glad to hear that. On the Western wells, it says that we're running about 8 million gallons, could go up to 11?
That's, that's correct, yeah. And remember, we're doing that additional work on well one. And then additionally, we had a little bit of an electrical issue at well seven, a breaker had failed. So our electricians are fixing that. So I try, every week, I try and give you the most updated procedure. I would like to, to, to just stress and maybe reiterate that there's eight wells. Doesn't mean we're pumping them all at the same time. There's an operations plan. We try, we, we have to meet the Bennett Banks protocol, right? So these wells are not, we turn them all on at the same time and forget about it. There's redundancy built in. So that there's day-to-day operational decisions that our staff makes, and we're really good at it. So, so I just, I just want to sort of reiterate that there, you know, operation of a wellfield isn't you turn the pump on and walk away. We're monitoring that every day.
Okay. I appreciate that. On the same note, with the Mary Roads integrating Evangeline at potentially full capacity into that pipeline, have we done any sort of preliminary evaluations or work to prepare that line? Because where they converge, we're going to have to, basically, there'll be some technology that makes those work.
Yeah, I'd like to say, and the, the city manager stated earlier, but we, we have a meeting on Monday, and that's with multiple entities to look at the integration of Evangeline into the Mary Roads Pipeline. So it's with HDR, who of course did our condition assessment, who modeled that pipeline. It's with Pape Dawson, and then it's also Hanson Engineering, who, they're a subcontractor of Pape Dawson will be involved. Additionally, we're, we're looking for some input from the LNRA. As you know, the Mary Roads Pipeline is a very complicated system, and I don't ever want to downplay how complicated it is because there's multiple pump stations that have to operate in unison. So we need to make sure that the integration of any additional water is done correctly so we don't put the pipeline at risk. The one thing that I do want to say is, is if you remember, that condition assessment showed that there were pressure exceedances when we operated at lower pumping schedules? Those exist. So if you put Evangeline water into the MRP and you're operating at lower pumping schedules, they still exist. They don't go away. So the goal is to continue to do this at schedule four, and that's one of the things that we need to talk about, and we'll continue to do so.
I know that we had several of our industry partners step up to the table as great partners. We, we definitely prioritize them in this whole conversation. But they basically, you know, told us that they're very interested and willing if their skillsets or their tools could be useful, that they'd like to be considered. And I know that was in a context for Inner Harbor, but I think pipelines are something they're very familiar with. So throwing that out there, if there is any kind of like, hey, we're curious on this, you guys have, you know, applicable experience with these large pipeline-type things all over, maybe that's something we, we look at. Because I had some industry members call, and they said, you know, we've done work on similar, and here's how we handle, you know, a routine shutdown to do inspections or clean, that type of thing. And I'm not discrediting your team. I think the world of you guys, truly. But if that's something helpful, I'd, I'd like us to still consider it because I do think they're partners.
That, that's a great comment. I personally have talked to many of those partners, and we've talked specifically about the MRP. They've made that same comment to me, specifically regarding what we would do on a shutdown. I do want to remind everyone, we, we can't shut it down. The situation we are in, I've, I've got to keep the Mary Roads Pipeline running every single day. And it, we can't even, I don't even want to go back to schedule three. Additionally, there's improvements that we still have to make at Bloomington and Woodsboro, but we can't make those because I don't want to go back down to schedule three. I want to stay at the 72 MGD. That complicates things an awful lot. And that goes back to that diversification conversation.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to, really quick, I noticed on our reuse slides here, we didn't actually include the GCA, but it sounds like you guys are, are going to meet with them again and bring some more information on a timeline for that. Peter, I know we talked several times about the drought contingency plan and how we actually quantify our drought, but I had a quick question on that. The way that it's written is the CM with council, of course, but the CM basically can say, we need to enter these stages.
That's correct.
That's, that's the trigger point. You use the data to say why you're recommending to enter into a different stage. But ultimately, the decision is with the city management. And so my curiosity is, is there or has there been a mechanism in place where we're still recognizing, you know, that Western reservoir, but as we're moving away from reliance on it, maybe there's a second tier that we acknowledge that we're still heavily, you know, because we're responsible for it?
Right.
A second tier to drive, how do we make that decision that we could put in that plan and utilize?
There, there would be, Councilwoman, we can look at that. Right now, the, the city manager has the authority to declare certain stages. However, the emergency, emergency stage one, which would have a rate impact, only council can adjust rates. So the council would be engaged, I can't decide to go into level one emergency without the council's endorsement or approval, a majority approval, because that one would include adjustments to rates, and only council can do that. We are looking at, Councilman Hernandez and I talked about it a year ago, analysis to say, what if there are no Western reservoirs anymore? What does that mean for this city and for the region? This drought is crippling and severe, and as Esteban said, maybe the drought of record. But we do need to look at that. What happens in our drought contingency plan? What happens with water planning if we have to include that as, as a reality? So I think the answer is yes to that, and we can come back and provide that to council at some point.
Okay. Councilwoman Combs?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, well, first, let me just clarify something. I've lived here all my life, so I have lived with industry all my life. I have family members that work in industry, so it's not like I'm totally against industry, just to make sure I got that clear. And as a matter of fact, I just want to say shout out to Flint Hills. I didn't go to the solar panels, but hey, I applaud you for that. Okay, so I'm also happy to hear about the level one 60 MGD, that that's our goal, because that's the other thing that, that you did state. To, for us to reach to level one, we need to at least get up to 60 MGD.
Right. We need to bring on 60 MGD more.
Okay.
Right.
So, so that's good. And I'm also grateful that Councilwoman Vaughn and some of the others are willing or are wanting to do a town hall, you know, out there in Bluntzer to, to give the residents some information. I, that also triggered me with a town hall because, for the residents here, like, you know, you mentioned, and we, I don't think anyone, I, I know personally, I hadn't heard this in the dais, but what is our, our true goal, you know, for, for our area? I never heard, never heard 185 to 190 million gallons a day. That's our goal. I never heard that. So I'd like to discuss why we have that goal. And I believe, Mr. Zanoni, you said that it would be based on additional customers. So I'm just saying, we need a conversation about that. Like, you know, what is it that would suffice our area? How much are we willing to pay for the water? But I also am grateful about the TDS, the water that we are getting from our groundwater, that it is still safe, we don't need to do any kind of reverse osmosis or anything right now, that it's blending well, right, with our water right now. So that's, I'm just wanting to make sure that, you know, the people that are around, you know, fishing and doing whatever, that it's not going to be affecting any of that, right?
Right. So again, it's challenging, it's challenging because of the Nuasis River. As part of our Ben &amp; Banks permit, we did do aquatic life monitoring as well, and determined that there weren't going to be issues there. The river itself, that section of the river, before any of this, had already been designated by TCQ as an impaired water body, primarily because of the TDS and some of the impacts of seawater.
Okay, I did not know that.
It's, you know, it's an interesting conversation, the Nuasis River is a very interesting conversation.
Okay.
Right?
Well, again, and I am also grateful that at least, like you say, it's imperative that we keep the Mary Roads Pipeline fully operational. So I just want to make sure that we are spending our, you know, our water rate waters, I mean, our water, and being able to keep up with that, you know, our money. Because like you said, it's, you know, it's basically, that, you know, that we just make sure that we upkeep our Mary Roads Pipeline and that, you know, we're doing everything possible to keep it going and to.
Yeah, we have, we have a staff assigned to that. There are, and even beyond that, there are many of us who work every day to ensure it runs as efficiently as possible.
Yeah, so anyway.
It's on my mind every day.
Well, good. It's on everyone's mind. And also, I'm also grateful to hear that industry is hopefully talking about getting that water that we're trying to get from Evangeline, and hopefully taking that off our hands, and using them, using that water to help their, you know, their water usage, but to help us, you know, actually in the long run. So again, I think that's really all I had to say. I just want to make sure that, you know, that the residents know that we are looking out for them, and that we're making sure that whatever we do pay, that it is fair and equitable. That I hope that in the future, that whenever we have to, that we have to raise these water rates, that it is because it's everybody, all the water customers having to do it, and that, you know, that they hopefully will not challenge those water rates, because what will happen is, it comes back to us. So again, please be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and Councilman Barretta.
Just real quick, have we factored into the timeline, or let me just, let me, I know, please factor into the timeline that Evangeline's 22 permits may be contested. So please be cognizant of that. You don't have to respond. I'm just asking that, you know, my father used to say, and I'm sure he stole it from somebody else, you plan for the worst and hope for the best. What is it? And then with regard to the reservation fee, I'd like to know, with regard to NRA, if with that, and it can be discussed in closed session, or it doesn't matter, but I'd like to know who else that they have reservation rights with, before I make a decision. So that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. And that was to my point, Councilman. Well, I'd like to add what Councilwoman Compos requested into next week's briefing, the discussion, she wanted a discussion on the firm yield, so y'all can add that to the water.
So we, because we knew we were doing this briefing today, and it would only be one business day between now and Tuesday, we did not put on the next Tuesdays a water briefing, because we're doing it, yeah, just to be mindful of the council's time.
That's fine, the next one.
Yeah, the next one, that is a big topic to handle, Mayor. I don't know if we're ready to do that right now. I'm trying to keep the team focused on bringing more water. That's something we can definitely do, but I would recommend, it would take a couple of weeks to develop that.
That's fine, and I think you're fine with it, as long as, as long as we can get it in there, you know.
Right, we'll bring it to council.
I think that's something that interests me as well. But to Councilman's comment just now, I think that's the point, is just providing us with, and you and I had this conversation, I may have had it with both Esteban and you, Nick, is, we have to be real about what we're discussing. That is not a negative on these options. What we're doing is amazing. You guys have been, Drew, prior to you, but the team that is still here and has been, y'all have been amazing in what has happened here, bridging the gap, you know, starting with the Mary Roads, Mary Roads Pipeline should be listed here, by the way, because it is a, it was where it all began, you know, increasing that water. And there's a risk there, too. There is a risk there, too. If something happens to that, you know, we're in trouble, we can't, I mean, we could have an issue there, but anyway, y'all have done an amazing job, because we're sitting here trying to beat the timeline. But we cannot assume that everything here is going to work out perfectly, and we have to have that Plan B. If 12 MGD can't be brought on in six to eight months, and we're counting on that, what are we, literally the people sitting right here, you, Nick, sitting behind that podium, Peter, behind that desk? What are we going to do then? We have to look at that now. And I know it could be, it seems, it may seem impossible, because we're trying to beat November of '26, but we have to look at that, we just do. And that's why I want that list of, a column of, you know, what is a risk associated with adding more water to the, to Mary Roads Pipeline? What's the risk associated with the wells? We have them. People came here and told us. We're not giving you these permits. I don't know how true that is, I don't know how political that can be, but they told us already. There are people already complaining about the water and how it tastes. And we're saying ORO is off the table. That's what I heard, Peter. So I'm just saying, it's, y'all already know these things can happen, because we're putting a lot of water in that river. So I'm just trying to be a realist. I'm not, I think what we're doing, I think we're going to achieve it. We're going, we're going to beat this, but I think we need to plan very wisely. So let's make sure that this body is very aware of the reality of what a risk can do to the timeline, because that is what we're trying to beat here, is timeline. So I, oh, we've got more comments, okay. Councilwoman Paxton is going to wrap it up.
Thank you. Call them on risk, sure. I'm still going to reiterate, since it was reiterated, we need to keep the conversation that this is effective. What's the best way to ensure that something succeeds? Don't let it fail. That's what this team has been working on really hard, and all of the information brought today is a testament to that. And our community deserves it. For us to explain to them, this is going to succeed, we'll figure it out. That kind of, that kind of topic needs to be the overarching branch there. I did have a question. I saw it posted, I don't know, a couple days ago, that there was a decrease in our inflows. Basically, the water coming into the lake has decreased from 2024. And I was curious, do we, our science, our data, is that indicative of the reduction of actual rainwater, or is there an increased draw north of us? Is there, what's kind of pointing to that decrease?
Sure. So the, you know, again, we meet with the National Weather Service weekly, and they had a great graphic, and I shared it at the last council meeting. So this is primarily due to the lack of rainfall. It's the lack of rainfall in our watershed, right? And again, it's very historic, and it's, you know, you talk to the state climatologists, and we always talk, we're also concerned about rainfall over Lake Texana and the Colorado River. And unfortunately, where our reservoirs are at, it has not been good, as you all know, over the last couple of years. And we're trying to catch up, and the hard thing is, normal precipitation doesn't help us. We need extraordinary precipitation to help us, you know? It's, in order to catch, you got to catch up from a huge deficit.
So if that's flowing, if I'm not mistaken, that's, I don't know, 30, 40 million gallons a day that's coming into the lake. If that lake were to drop to zero, does that water continue to flow through? You know, there will always be a trickle supplying the river coming towards us. What happens? And I guess maybe that's part of the discussion that you were referencing, Peter, is what happens if that goes to zero? Is that no longer an option completely? Because that river, I would imagine, will continue even if diminished.
Yeah, the river will absolutely continue to diminish, and that's one of the reasons why those Nuasis groundwater wells make sense, to supplement that flow. But it will absolutely diminish. And then, you know, our partners utilizing water, I mean, they're working on their own emergency projects, like City of Mathis, they're working on their own projects to mitigate that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Scott.
Hey, Peter, so there was a presentation recently you gave optimistic timelines, and then I think it was realistic timelines. There were different, there were different timelines for each project, you know? And so I'd like to continue to see that, and I'd like you all to articulate how they change and why they change. I think my sense is, hey, we met with, you know, three engineering firms, and they showed us that we can, we can do something at the same time, and that's why the realistic timeline is moving from December of next year to summer of next year. I think that's what I'm, I think I articulated earlier, that's not a risk conversation, that's a knowledge conversation. And you gave us that presentation, it may have been you, it may have been.
It was Garver. Garver gave a very detailed presentation. I actually have it here. They gave it on July 29th.
Yeah.
And they talked about expedited timelines and realistic timelines.
Well, I think that's what I'm interested in, and so if we don't make a timeline, we can say, well, that was an optimistic, and say the realistic is. My sense is the timeline you gave in today's presentation are very optimistic timelines. I understand, I don't disagree with Councilmember Paxton, that we want to, we want to make those, right? But I'd like to know, you know, my hesitancy is, I think we'd like to work on the realistic timelines, and then articulate how we're moving that timeline up. So that's my two cents. I'd like to see that again, and I'd like you to articulate why it's different today than it was on July the 29th. When it comes to NRA next week, I had specifically asked for documentation when you were last year, showing us examples how the Water Development Board does fund P3 projects. I never got it. I'd like that. I don't want to ask about it again, I'd like it. And I was told I was going to get it. I was told I was going to get it sometime back. The second part is, I'd like to see a business plan, and Peter, I don't want you to think I'm just in a bad mood because I'm not feeling well, but I'm going to hold you to it. You're the guy that's recommending that we make this financial commitment, and so I'm assuming that you've looked at the business plan that shows we're going to get these funds in these tranches, and then our expenses are going to flow around such that we're going to have enough money, you know, to get the project done. I think it is unwise of us to make a $2.7 million contract, a commitment, especially this early in the process, without really comfort, and I think the banker in the room would say that, that there's a business plan, and I hope there is. I assume there is, and I assume you're going to show it to us next week.
No, I'm just going to save time, now there is none. We don't have, they're developing it, but the reservation fee would be to be part of this business plan development. The reservation fee says this city wants to be part of this project and wants to reserve.
But we don't know that there's going to be enough money at the end to fully fund the engineering necessary to get to the P3 contract.
I would say that's a correct statement, yeah.
Well, I'm going to ask you to say it again next week, so if you're prepared, because that's a pretty big statement, that we don't have a business plan, that we're going to be asked to contribute to very shortly, and that, I think that's, makes me nervous. Also, if you kind of work through, present to us, I would like to see, Harbor Island, those periods, it's the option period, it's the development period, I think that would be good to know. So we have a sense of, all right, we're putting 2.7 million, when are we going to feel like the project's real? Yeah, when are we going to feel like the project's real? Those are my two cents. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Roy.
So thank you for the presentation. You know, I want to thank the audience that has attended today. Also, I received a lot of phone calls and had a lot of one-on-ones with people in the community that had a lot of questions about where we're at, and I've had a lot of really good feedback. So I just want to encourage everybody to continue to communicate with us. I want to thank council. This was, we do these workshops, I think one of the benefits of this is that it does give us an opportunity to kind of be a little bit more laser-focused on, and stay on track as far as looking at a particular issue or issues. So again, thank you, council, for everybody willing to do this. This is important. You know, one of the things I can't help but thinking about is that if we didn't do the things that we've done already to enhance the Mary Roads Pipeline and some of the other projects that we're working on, where will we be right now with that date? Because that date could really be coming up pretty quick, if we hadn't put some of the other things in place to get to utilize the water effectively right now. So just keep doing what you're doing, and I really do believe we're going to get through this, and we're going to learn. I think there's a lot of lessons that we can learn from this, and hopefully that history will not repeat itself. You know, we've been fighting droughts in Texas for years, and hopefully, we can turn the page and have it where we can eliminate the risk, or at least lessen the risk in the future. So again, thank you very much.
Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, on some of the, some of these issues, and we got CCW working on a lot of things, but really should focus on the items that'll help us avoid curtailment. And I'll say that, I wanted to say that again for emphasis. And I think those two projects are Evangeline Laguna and Effluent Reuse for the immediate needs, right? All the other stuff is great, and we need to spend time on them, but the two main focuses are the ones that are getting the waters to us the quickest, so we can avoid that curtailment. I know Councilman Barretta identified in a very distinct way about the concerns with curtailment, right? So we want to make sure that we focus on those, very clearly, laser-focused on it. And that means communication with San Patricio County Commissioners, as well as the City of Sinton. If that requires us to also do a backup with them, feeding off the Mary Roads Pipeline for, to their water treatment plant, then we need to, you know, negotiate those deals so we can give them reassurances that we're not going to be impacting them negatively, right? So I just think that if we do those things and be partners, and have a win-win situation in these discussions with them, and, you know, realize that San Patricio does take a lot of water from us, and if we run out of water, they run out of water, right? Is that?
It's 40 million gallons a day.
Right. So if we run out of water, San Patricio runs out of water, too.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so I want to make sure that we're doing the correct discussions, so we don't, you know, we don't put them in a situation where they're afraid that we're taking their water. And we're not. We're in compliance with the Groundwater Control District, with what the requirements are. We're, you know, let's give them the assurances that they need, and get this water and move as quickly as possible. I think that will help the Groundwater Control District, because I think at their last meeting, they had more people there than they had their entire existence.
Yeah, at the board, at the ground, yeah.
Right. So we need to give them the tools and the information that they need to be comfortable with the decisions they're making to giving us those transfer permits.
Right.
Just, I want to make sure that's the case. And if you need help from us, please ask.
Well, we will. So Councilman, we, I met recently with John Hobson, the city manager of Sinton, and also the mayor of Sinton. And one of the things I promised them, but the council will have to approve it, is just what you said, which is that we are, one, going to take care of any, we're going to remedy any situation that could happen to their existing three wells, meaning we will be responsible for the engineering and the payment to fix that. And then, secondly, that we'll give them an interconnect to our water supplies, whether it's the Mary Roads Pipeline or our Evangeline Wells. This is in the event something happens to their pumping, unrelated to our well field, they'll have the opportunity to tie into our system for 60 days free. We have a draft in a local agreement, this is where you'll all come in, where I'm going to present it to the city manager of Sinton next week, if we can get on his calendar, and then we'll bring that to this council, and then he'll bring it to his city council for that approval. That has really helped them tremendously to know that we're partners with them, and that we're not going to impact Sinton. Secondly, we'll be meeting with, there's a smaller groundwater district there, the St. Paul Water District, we'll be meeting with them hopefully next week with a similar message. And recently, I did meet with the city manager, as I said, and the mayor of Sinton, Judge Krebs, and then we met with Mayor Skaro and city manager Wright in Portland, the biggest city, second to Corpus in the region. So we're doing just what you said. So we're doing just what you said, and we're going to continue to do that. We did promise Judge Krebs a presentation to the full commissioners in an upcoming meeting. They meet, I think he said every, they meet frequently, so we're going to get on their agenda to do a formal presentation on our project in these next couple of months.
Okay, so that, that helps with that.
Right.
That answer. The other side is wastewater reuse. You know, we need to get off the snyte on that one and, and move as fast as we can go on that, especially if we can get it to, to industrial partners.
We do, and Ardua, Dan Linecker is here, so you may recall there was an initial, we were talking Ardua GCA. GCA is still a potential partner. Dan, though, with Line Decker is still, with Ardua, I should say, is still the lead on this, helping the city.
And I understand that, but, and, and I understand that GCA likes treating water.
Right.
And Garver is looking into direct reuse.
Yeah, we're not looking at that.
If we can avoid all that, that'll take a lot of time out of it.
We agree.
Maybe it's just Ardua during the work.
That's, that's exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nick, thank you. This is going to conclude our water workshop. And again, thank everybody for being here. Staff, thank you so much for all the work behind this. We have a couple of follow-up items, but I think that, like I mentioned earlier, there's absolutely hope that we will bridge this gap and hopefully work towards, you know, the, I keep calling it the immediate need is bridging the gap, and the short term is the one to three-year solution. So thank you all very much. Thank you, Dan, for being here as well. All right. Workshop adjourned.